All right, welcome everyone to a meeting of the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission here on Thursday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty. And we're gathered tonight for a couple of purposes. We have a special called Executive Session for purposes of Personnel and Real Estate Acquisition or Disposal. And then we will, prior to that, have a conversation about tiering or sequencing of what projects will be done in what years for SPOS two thousand and twenty. To enter into Executive Session now, I'm going to ask the Clerk to call roll.
Davenport.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Wright. Denson.
Here.
Two.
Here.
Edwards. Barrett.
Here.
Thornton. Hank.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, I will entertain a motion to enter it into Executive Session upon conclusion of the work session.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I think I had a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Parker, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And then I'm actually going to ask for a motion to adjourn Executive Session at the conclusion of that session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Davenport, all in favor of adjourning at the end of our Executive Session?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, well, for the bulk of today, we are going to be having a conversation about our SPOS two thousand and twenty package, which we know thirteen months ago was approved by the voters. And we've begun to collect pennies, but have to make the challenging decision of which projects will be completed in which year. And for the sort of purpose of ease of sort of understanding the breadth of the program that'll last for almost twelve years, it's been broken into quarters with three fiscal years in each quarter. And so Capital Projects Director Robert Cheshire has created three alternatives as a starting point for conversation. And he is going to take us through, I think, high level of some of the questions that we had in early conversation, particularly around bond financing for projects and what that means, both in terms of when we pay that money back and when we have to conclude repayment of that money. And then we're going to get into the nuts and bolts of of the prospective tiering spreadsheets. So Blaine, I'll turn it over to you if you want to introduce anything else before Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Good evening, Commissioners and other staff joining us tonight. So the purpose of tonight is, as the Mayor laid out, you know, come back with some responses to some earlier questions and show you some different scenarios. It would be great if we came out on the other end of this evening with a plan, but this is a pretty intricate puzzle, if you will. And so at the very least, we are going to be all ears, listening to your questions and feedback. And it could be that we end tonight without any single resolution, but that staff would come back, you know, in the form of agenda report in the cycle that that tries to solve and reflect as much as we've heard that is something that works. And then, of course, just like with all actions of the Commission, you have the ability to change that, you know, agenda item to suit suit the purposes of the consensus. So we're here tonight to spend the time that we need to give you the answers you need and get feedback from you that's meaningful. And then staff will try to present a workable plan to everyone in the wake of the meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Cheshire, our Capital Projects Director, to walk us through a presentation and entertain some questions.
Thank you, Blaine. Can you hear me okay? Good, just want to make sure. Let me share. Good evening, everybody. Well, obviously, as y'all know, this is a continuation of a couple of months of us working on a process of establishing the SPOS two thousand and twenty tier funding schedule. Blaine alluded to this, but this this evening, to help make this session more productive and to help us hopefully answer some of your questions directly and quicker than we did at the last work session, which I thought, you know, maybe got me off track a little bit or got us off track. And I'm going to try to help you with that and prevent that again tonight. So I've invited a few of the directors that have projects in the in the tier in the SPOS two thousand and twenty, but also included in the directors, there's some additional staff from finance and have two other people that are outside of Athens Clark County staff, and that's going to be Tom Woodward, who is with First Tryon. He is one of the financial advisors for Athens Clark County, and then also Ben Brooks, who's an attorney, who's a specialist in SPOS. And I know some of the questions we had last time, I thought it would have been better had I had some of them on here. So they are here tonight, and I really want to thank them for participating in this. And look forward to some of their answers and some of the responses that they're going to give. So this evening, as far as an agenda goes, going to do some go through some of the facts again. Some of these are reiterations or or just reminders, but I think they're important to reiterate to make sure that we're on the right track tonight. We're going to talk about some of the facts regarding the general obligation bond debt service. And we could talk about some of the factors again that impact the tier funding schedule. And tonight, what I'm looking for, and the Mayor's alluded to it, and Blaine has mentioned it as well, and that's some general guidance from the Mayor and Commission to help us as we finalize this tier funding schedule. And hopefully, you know, a goal would be to get it in front of you in January for a vote. But we'll do whatever we need to do to, you know, delay it if we have to. We want this to be right and everybody to feel good about it. And then we're actually going to go into three scenarios. I'm not going to necessarily call them. They're not really options because they're not they're not balanced, but they're scenarios that give us starting points to work from. So that's going to be a little bit of an exercise to hear that from y'all. And then finally, we'll wrap it up with next step and any additional questions that maybe we don't get during the during the presentation and the exercise. So what are some of the facts regarding the general obligation bond debt service? Just as a reminder, the maximum, as per the referendum that was passed, would be that we could issue up to one hundred and twenty seven million dollars in bonds and general obligation bonds. And we've already issued the first ones, roughly thirty two million, that were spread out amongst Projects One, Two, and Three, the big three. And then the accountants that are listening in won't like the way that I worded this particular sentence, but it's I've tried to generalize it so people like myself can understand. This, what this is saying is, by the time we pay back the one hundred and twenty seven million dollars in general obligation bonds, the the net interest that we pay, because we're actually getting some upfront money that's not associated with the bond itself, it is a premium that that allows us to to get an interest, a certain interest rate from the where we're borrowing from. So the easiest way for me to explain for the one hundred and twenty seven million, we net roughly have to pay an interest of roughly ten million dollars. So that just kind of gives you that's that's for context. And then finally, I think, two really important items, and these, these, these are more responses to some of the questions that we had during the last work session, and that is the debt repayment has to be completed by two thousand and thirty. So keeping that in mind, you say, well, let's let's wait and issue the last bonds in FY twenty three, FY twenty four. Well, they they have to be completely paid back by two thousand and thirty. So the farther we put it off, that means that the more that we'd have to repay in any given year. And actually, it's that's why I put bullet point four on here, also set by the referendum, is the fact that there are there are limits, and there's a there's a schedule in the referendum, and there are limits, maximum limits that we can pay back as far as principal goes in any given year. So we can't do a balloon payment at the end. We can't lessen those payments and then pay over those amounts at the end. We are we are structured, and there's a threshold that we can do. So as we go, what you're going to see on the three spreadsheets that I'm going to show in a minute is our recommendation, based on the information that we have from finance and from the financial advisors, and the way that I'm hearing that you would like the projects to go, would be that we issue the remainder of the bonds in FY twenty two. So that's going to be July, the upcoming July is when FY twenty two is going to start. So that's the the three tiers. I wanted to go ahead and say that in case I forget to say it later on the on the spreadsheets themselves. So what are some of the factors? Have you heard? Excuse me?
Kelly, you might have asked a question about that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, Robert, I hear what you're saying about paying it off in at two thousand and thirty is the last date, but on your on your spreadsheet, you've got one row there that you're paying on each scenarios. The debt service project is you've got six million listed in FY thirty two. Can you tell me why, if it's got to be dealt by F thirty, why is it six million there, I guess?
I'm looking for the six million, so hold on just a second.
Project number four, and it's on the very last column in quarter four.
Oh, yeah, that actually is. And Patty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is actually interest, I mean, interest, potentially interest earned. Is that correct, Patty?
Um, if everybody remembers correctly, project four was set aside to help cover a cost of the or the debt of the interest. So sixteen million dollars was set aside to help pay for the interest. If we, you know, depending on what we've got here in the debt service payments, we should have about six million dollars left. Because if you remember in the last slide, it said approximately net ten million in interest. We should have a little bit of savings in that project. So, of course, we won't know until we actually have the the firm debt service payments. But right now, the way we're gauging everything, we are hoping to have a little bit of money left over in that project and available to reallocate somewhere else. So that money that's sitting there, the reason I put it all the way to the end is because we won't know until closer to the end of the program, how much money we're actually going to have left over in that project.
Right. I guess it looks like an expense the way it's laid out here.
Yes, sir.
Instead of a payment.
Yeah, it's just money that's available in the project. And I put it at the end because we don't anticipate having to spend that. We hope it will be available to move somewhere else.
And I'm going to explain this spreadsheet in a in a minute. But if you if you look at the top, there's debt service repayment, number one, and debt service repayment, number two. Number one is the one that the bonds that were issued in FY twenty. And then number two is what I was saying to issue the remainder in FY twenty two. And if you'll see those two lines, they end in two thousand and thirty.
Yeah, no, I see that, but I was just catching that number four.
Absolutely. Good question.
Thought it was an expense.
Thanks. So so these factors, we've talked about a little bit. Some of these we talked about before, but I thought they were important to reiterate. That was that the budgets for projects oh, one, oh, two, and oh, three, which, of course, is the facility space modernization, the affordable housing, and also the classic center arena will encumber approximately fifty percent of the anticipated collection. So it's just important to see the weight of those and the amount that those encumber. And of course, any large encumbrances, whether it's those three, or we do something different, any of those large encumbrances in the early years, and you'll see it on the spreadsheet as we go through the exercise, obviously and significantly impacts the the projects, the scheduling, but also potentially the scope of the projects that are in the latter years. Of course, the debt service, once we initiate those, comes off the top. And I've heard David and I've heard Patty both say that that's the that's the first fruit that that starts kicking in, and you've got to pay that first and every year. And then finally, of course, it's a no brainer, but the more interest that we pay, the less money that's going to be available for those projects that that we want to do. So what are we looking for tonight? Really, some, some, if we could dial down and get some, you know, really tight answers, that would be great. But if as a minimum, I'd like to get some general guidance, if possible, from the Mayor and Commission, it would be these three bullet points, which would be, do we initiate project one, facility space modernization, and FY twenty one? And then also, which of the projects, and you'll see it again, second, what thirteen through thirty five are, which projects do you absolutely want to see in the first quarter? I'm going to probably use the terms front loaded sometimes, but then the first few years of the twelve year SPOS program. And then, and this, this one will make sense to you in a minute, too. But do you agree with the funding distribution that I've shown in this three sustainability projects? And one of the things that I heard certainly loud and clear, and it made a lot of sense, would be that those three projects, primarily, I'm talking about renewable energy, that those get more than what I was showing when I showed that was roughly balanced distribution tier funding schedule, I believe it was at the last work session. So you're going to see, so I'd like to see if we agree or y'all agree that that funding is adequate as the way that I'm showing it. Anything before we get into the the actual exercises? Questions? Anything from maybe some of the directors or the others that I've got on here, anything that to clarify before we get into the spreadsheets? Just unmute yourself and speak up?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
And I've I've watched the work session, but I wasn't actually part of this body the last time that y'all talked about this. So forgive me if this was already covered. But if we if and when we take another bond issuance, does that have to be tied specifically to the facility space modernization project? Or can the money from that also go to the other projects?
The the general obligation bond money can go toward any of the projects.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thanks for the question.
Well, just to clarify, but those those purposes for which the monies will be spent in the bond offering are declared at that time. So Commissioner Hul, just to say, if you said you in the bonds that you sold them for the sustainability projects, you couldn't then use them, say, for library? I mean, it's got you got to be clear on what you're borrowing the funds for. It's my understanding.
Okay. And we also could use them for the library or any other project, essentially.
Yeah, any of the projects that are out there, you could borrow funds against. And there are some limitations as to, obviously, how much and when you can initiate those bond offerings. But any of the SPOS projects are eligible for that, is my understanding, Mr. Cheshire.
That was mine as well. Thanks.
This is Mike. If I could ask, point out one thing, piggyback on what Jesse's talking about. I think with the facility space modulation project, if that, you know, because I know that's got like two components to it, the the Judicial Center and the courthouse. And, you know, certainly, you've got to build the Judicial Center first before you before you start doing anything on the courthouse. So perhaps if that were broken out, I don't I think it was about ten million for the courthouse renovations to, if I'm not mistaken, I don't I can't remember the amount, but if that were broken, that might get a bit a bit easier to look at that as far as as far as bond issuance for the Judicial Center, but maybe maybe look at regular SPOS for the for doing the courthouse renovations.
And you'll see that on the spreadsheet. We'll go ahead and pull those up. Patty, want to let me stop sharing? Okay. I know this is tiny. We we practiced several times to try to get this maximized and based it off of working from laptops. So I know I heard one of you say you need you have your magnifying glass, and I apologize. It's it's so important, though, at least, and we can zoom in. So we can zoom in. You if you say you can't see something in particular, we'll zoom in. But it's so important to be able to see the whole picture. But I'm going to start on this. Okay, let me just if just take a second. The Mayor said this, I'm going to, I think it's important to understand what you're seeing here. I see it every day. And but you're seeing it just for a few minutes every month. So again, the colors, we went ahead and took the twelve years, broke it into four quarters, three in each. I think that little makes it a little easier to talk about moving things up and back. The very top is your balance that that rolls over each year, if there is a balance. The projected revenue comes from finance. You'll see some escalation in every year from starting in tier one, twenty four million, five hundred thousand to twenty nine million, nine. We tried to simplify this from from the last work session that we had. We changed it around a little bit to make the the debt service a little easier to read. But the debt service on the general obligation bonds repayment, one, again, that's that's the what's already been issued. And this is the so the repayment principle and interest are combined here, started already in FY twenty. Debt service two is is us estimating, and at least these spreadsheets are based on issuing the remainder of those general obligation bonds in FY twenty two. So that's why you see the the repayment starting here. And then we have the the total project SPOS expenditures are not only your your debt service up here, but it's all your projects down below. So that's the top part. And so you're going to, I'm going to go over the projects. I think that's going to be important to see what this is based on. And the reason I'm showing this, why I started with this spreadsheet, is I took the spreadsheet, basically, that I presented to you last month, and and listened to the projects that that I heard you say you wanted to see front loaded. So I'll go over those and where we've placed them here. But I thought that was important to do, because what this shows, and this one is based on not only issuing in FY twenty two, the the remainder of the general obligation bonds, but this has the project one, which instead of saying space modernization, I say like the one Commissioner, which is right, this is the Judicial Center and the renovation of the existing courthouse. We're showing it, and you're going to see some dollars right here. The reason being, the the general obligation bonds, even if we issued one hundred and twenty seven million and used them all for projects one, two, and three, based on the estimates of those projects, the project costs, there's there's not, there's roughly twenty, twenty, between twenty and twenty five million dollars that still has to be made up from just straight SPOS revenue to to fund those three. So even when you're seeing that money here in the second quarter, it doesn't mean that that's when we're starting the space modernization project, since there's going to be a sighting and a lot of approval processes, design, planning, those could start whenever we say they start in here. This is in essence, showing that the construction would start somewhere probably between tier three and tier four with, and as you mentioned, and that's what we've shown here, spreading and spreading that out. Now, there could be a gap in here. If we wait, decided to wait a year to do the or two years, whatever, to do the renovation to the courthouse. What I'm showing here is to, for these monies, they would join in and do the construction of the Judicial Center, and then spread out, and then do the renovation of the courthouse over a roughly three to four year period. So in addition to this top part, the projects themselves are listed almost numerically, but we group them into light projects. They're down the side. The the approved budget for each project is down this column. And then the cost for each of the projects, most of the cases, you'll see that they're spread out, because, again, most of the time, even if you don't have sighting, you've still got planning, you've got approvals, I've got it, you typically go in front of Mayor and Commission for for two play at two spots, that concept and the schematics. And then you then you start your design and your constructions are typically, depending on the size of the product, project, they're going to be spaced out over anywhere from two to four to five years. So that's why, even though you've got one project here, I'm not, Patty's working this, so we'll we'll work in you sitting here. But a project, anyway, would typically take a few years. So what I wanted to start here, and I'm going to start in this area and work my way down. And what I'd like to see is if we can agree and then mainly talk about the projects thirteen through thirty five. So to just get you already in it, projects one, two, three, and four, that's your big three, plus the debt services, project four. Then you have your annually funded projects, and those are fire department, public safety vehicle and equipment, park facility improvements and facilities and equipment. And those are, for the most case, where general fund money was either cut out completely or or cut out partially with that funding mechanism shifted to SPOS two thousand and twenty.
Hey, Robert, can I ask you a question about that real quick?
Yes.
So so with the number, for example, number twenty, the park facilities improvement, we that's you've got, in all the scenarios, it goes, looks like you've got three hundred thousand each year, starting in two thousand and twenty two. But in the two thousand and eleven SPOS, there's still one point seven million dollars left over to spend from the two thousand and eleven SPOS, based on the December fourth update. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, that's that's kind of a lot of money. And I really want to say also that the public facilities park improvements, when we develop this SPOS list, you know, we kind of, when we were doing it, we were looking at certainly some of the leisure services related projects, the the expenses for some of those were more than we allocated in the SPOS. So I think with that part facilities improvement program, what we did was we put money into that in case some of those leisure services related projects that we cut back on needed some additional funds as they were being built or developed. So at any rate, that's from what I remember, that was in some of the tenth of that of those dollars going to six million dollars.
And that's a
The concern is that there's still, the concern is that there's still one point seven million left in two thousand and eleven SPOS dollars that hasn't been utilized yet.
And that's a good comment. And Ken and Andrew are both on here. I'm going to start with, and you're right, this, Ken and I have had a lot of discussions on these, and they've actually, although there's three hundred thousand in these first years, you'll see that it's actually backloaded somewhat for the reason you're talking about, knowing that there was some money left, and they wouldn't need as much. But this is not broken down annually in even increments. I backloaded that with just put in here what Ken and Andrew felt like they would need to supplement that those other dollars. But they're on here, and I'm going to let them comment to that as well. It's a good question. Thank you.
Well, let me respond by saying, a good bit of that one point seven million is committed in projects that are currently going on at Sandy Creek Park, renovating that
Renovating that beach in the surrounding area there and also hopefully of being able to address one of the playgrounds that's 30 years old now. So those projects are underway. They've got, they were slowed down unfortunately because of the pandemic. But most of that money is committed to current projects.
Yeah, most, also, most of that money is money we just moved into that project with, in, in June to replace the FY21 budget money that was cut for, for roofs for Lay Park and Bishop, I believe. There's two roofs, uh, which are almost 600 of that, that.
Correct. Bishop is the big one, which has had several leaks in the past couple of years.
So I'll build on that a little bit. And FY20 and FY21, the commission took action on a budget that reduced, uh, both fleet and facility capital funding contributions to, to zero. Uh, or close to it. I'm sorry. That is, that is not correct. Facilities, yes. Fleet, they initially, initially removed public safety funding to the tune of about 1.2 million dollars. Last fiscal year, that was removed plus some other general fund contributions. So we have been to, begun to accrue very significant capital deficits on our existing infrastructure. Now that was offset last year, as Keith just mentioned, with some contributions out of that SPOSS 11 balance. My team is currently working on implementing those projects at facilities. We have already installed a generator at Fire Station One as a replacement. And we have some roof projects underway at the library and the parks. We are certainly better off for that money, absolutely. But one challenge we have is that because it's SPOSS money from 11, it must be correlated to SPOSS 11 projects. There was no generic bucket of facilities funding. So one example of where we run into a challenge with that is we have a roof that is now due at the health department over on Hancock. It is a very expensive expenditure and I do not believe that I could tie it to a SPOSS 11 project. So we're now having to look to SPOSS 20 or the general capital budget.
Well, Andrew, I'm sorry. I was just talking about specifically this, the park improvements. Because both 211 and 2020 have a title of park facilities improvements.
And I can speak to that a little bit too, Commissioner Hamby and Andrew and Kent. And that bucket was not meant so much to augment the other parks projects that are found on this list, but you know, there's, there's these annually funded projects, the fire department equipment, the public safety vehicles, facility equipment systems, park facility improvements. That was where the mayor and commission, we talked about trying to use SPOSS funds for some of the general capital needs to free those up for other things. So these are a routine replacements of various things across the parks and you know, from a general capital standpoint, leisure services spins down their dollars every year because of the need of, across the parks to keep them up.
And I might add, I might add that our initial request in this project was 25 billion based on our spreadsheet and inventory and capital assets and, and the conditions of all of our, of, of all of that equipment and locations. So this is a small portion of what we initially needed in that full project.
One of the things notable to me in the named leisure services projects in 2020 is the number that really aren't there, you know, Lay, East Athens, Ben Burton, Southeast Clark. And so I know all those have ongoing capital costs associated with them.
Correct.
Thank y'all. That's, that, that's why I wanted everybody on here. That's just very good information, very good dialogue. And again, I want to commend the, the directors because I went back to them two or three times just to really challenge them to say, where do you have to have that money? When do you have to have it? And is there any, anything we can move out? Even if it's just a little bit to try to bring some other projects out and, and they were really phenomenal in the, in the give that they did. So let's, um, so I'm going over these first ones to see if, I'm not saying that we, you can absolutely go in there and move stuff around and change it, but I'm really trying to get down so we can talk more on the, the projects. So that's why I want to go over these first ones. Again, five, eight, 20 and 27 where your annually funded projects, uh, six, seven and nine are your public safety related projects, which is of course the, um, Fire Station Five, E911 phone system, and then the mobile medical services facility. And so two of those aren't a lot of money. The, the, the bigger one is the fire station and we've shown that in the middle, really quarter two and three. So we've stretched that out. Probably farther than the chief would like, but that's where we're showing it in this scenario. And then I mentioned this in the presentation and that was to take a look at the sustainability related projects and see if you're okay with the way that, uh, the amounts of money that I pulled up from the, from the ends and distributed more in the first years. And I'd, I'd been asked a question last time, are these, do the, do these monies go along with the new projects? And typically the what I heard from staff was that these are more for retrofits. Not that they can't be put into projects that may have a, a lot of sustainability or renewable energy in them, uh, that they could be a supplement, but a lot of this money is, is for retrofit. So I may have miss spoken on that answer last time. I think it was Commissioner Link who asked me that question. And I've got people on here if you want to go into that, that deeper. But you'll see the money that I did pull up to put in there, uh, which is significantly different from what I had last time. And I, and I heard your comments and I agreed with them. I think Commissioner Thornton had commented about it as well.
Yeah, I, I have a quick, sorry, I'm trying to unmute myself. Yeah, as far as, okay, so you're saying that the renewable energy pot bucket of money is, is meant for existing facilities to retrofit them with renewable energy, whereas these brand new projects, renewable energy mechanisms are built into those projects.
That's, that's the theory. Now I might, Andrew might want to, we've, we've had some long discussions on that. And so I don't know that it's a hard and fast rule, but that was, um, a lot of my understanding.
Okay, that's reassuring because you know, I was under the impression that yes, you know, when we were designing these projects, they were designed to be modern facilities, which includes renewable energy. So as we move forward with our housing project and, um, you know, space modernization and all that. And, and any new facilities we build, the new facilities will have renewable energy designed into the project on the front end.
Yes, in fact, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert. Well, I would say this, and especially as we're looking out over 12 years, it is absolutely clear that that, that the mayor and commission are committed to renewable energy. And just because we're, um, you know, we have the public here and, and we want to manage expectations, that is the intent, Commissioner Link, no question. As we get further along, if construction costs escalate greatly, you know, we may have to look at that and how we manage that and what parts of the program we could, you know, you could cut other pieces of the building before you cut renewable energy, but there's just so, so much of the unknowns in the future, but that is absolutely intent.
Yep.
My concern is, you know, as we move along and make improvements to spaces, you know, we need new roofs on things and stuff. You know, when you put a new roof on, that's kind of the time to incorporate solar. So I, my, my feeling is, you know, we need to have this constant collection going towards renewable energy so we can dip into it along the way. Is that, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Andrew, do you want to answer that?
I'm going to actually defer to Mike Wharton and, uh, jump in if he has any additional questions.
Commissioner Link, you're exactly right. We, we are looking at the, the opportunity to pick this low hanging fruit to take, to go back to these, uh, facilities and opportunities where we already know we, we're behind the curve for energy conservation. And begin to bring those up because the newer buildings are going to, uh, you know, LEED certification 20 years ago is, uh, if you had platinum 20 years ago, it now that is common to the, the general construction business. So as we go back, we want to pick those buildings up. We want to pick those roofs up. We want to, uh, put these new facilities and opportunities, uh, out there so we can, we begin to address our stock uh, as we move forward and bring those forward at the same time.
I have a question about, oh.
So, so yeah, I just want to reiterate, um, the new projects were, were costed out with top renewable energy inefficiency. Is that what you're saying? Cause I'm, I'm hearing from folks that served on that SPOSS committee that, that don't understand that that was the case.
Did you say the top sustainability? Did you say top?
Or they were costed out with, with the renewable energy incorporated into that cost.
Yeah, I, I would assume, you, 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 things like Blaine said, um, it's, it depends on, you know, what we're talking about when you say sustainability. So it's a great question and I don't, I can't answer that one as far as the, um, was it costed in to?
Let me, can I chime in real quick? I, I just want to remind everybody that the renewable energy construction guidelines for government construction is currently in the legislative review committee. So I know, I think in January, maybe Andrew is going to be back on deck with proposals for how we're going to accommodate renewable construction within, you know, moving forward from, from, from that point forward with, and that'll incorporate all these SPOSS projects.
And, and that's where I probably can jump in. I said, the, I, I sat through a lot of those SPOSS projects myself. I would say that upon initial submittal, many applicants did in fact submit for solar, but as common to the process, they were asked if they could reduce their project. And so most projects submitted reductions. It is plausible that those reductions no longer have funding to sustain solar. The current county policy is for a LEED certified building and new construction. And so that is what uh, is, is basically guaranteed in, in a SPOSS project. Solar would be, uh, in the mix and could either be funded by the project itself is, if funding is sufficient or through, uh, project 11.
Kelly, can I ask a question? Kelly?
Yeah.
So I think Melissa's question is a really important question because and, and we kind of need, if we're going to try and figure out tierings, we kind of need to know the answer to the question, which is, is new construction, does it or does it not anticipate the energy saving attributes? Because if the answer to that question is the cost, the, the, the budget for the new construction already includes that, you know, those assumptions that we're going to do the energy saving, uh, solar and all the rest of it. Then where we tier the energy mitigation and restoration, excuse me, the energy, um, the renewable energy project needs to mirror our renovations, not our new construction, which is going to shape how we tier these things. If the budgets for the new construction do not include those things, then the renewable energy needs to, needs to mirror both the new construction and the renovation timetables. And so we really need an answer to Melissa's question, I think.
Thank you, Andy. That's what I was trying to say.
I might be able to add a little bit to that. We're estimating that we could easily spend between 425,000 and 975,000 a year outside of new construction. But of that, the higher number are probably the 975 might, could incorporate solar on new construction if, uh, it had been cut. With the exception of the classic center and the North Athens projects. They can also be added fairly easily after a project, provided the roof structure is designed and some of the infrastructure is put in place uh, at the time of construction. So we, we're, we're looking at literally half a million dollars that we could spend just on renovation projects, on, on energy related savings associated with renovation projects.
Well, and I understand that, Mike, and I appreciate your clarification, but I don't know about any of the other commissioners, but I don't have, I don't know which projects had the renewable energy and the solar and everything cut from them and which do not. So we kind of need to know that if we're going to put a, a, a tiering together that, um, ensures that we have enough money in the renewable energy project to make sure that any construction we do, whether it's new construction or renovation, is able to meet the standards that we want it to do. And so, you know, to, to, to reiterate, if what we're planning on new construction already has that in the budget, then the renewable energy project just needs to mirror or be in sync with the renovations. But, but if those new construction projects do not have that in the budget, then that sets up a completely different tiering, um, schedule. And I, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't off the top of my head know which of the new construction project do and do not have sufficient money already in the budget to do things like solar, et cetera.
Well, I, I will say that I think all the projects or I can't say that, uh, many of the projects, when I've looked at the applications in the narrative of the submission, the intent was that we're going to do renewable energy. As you'll remember, and this happens in each of the SPOSS, there's not enough money to suit all the needs. And so there was an alternate proposed. To your point, Commissioner Harrod, we can go back and see, uh, in some cases, the alternate proposed was by the entity that submitted it. In some cases, the budgets were cut. You know, and in all cases, I don't think that there was a separate bucket for renewable energy that was either taken in or taken out. It was just taken from the entire project. A case in point would be, uh, facility space modernization. I think that received 10 million dollars less than, than it, uh, initially was proposed. So all that to say, uh, beyond that, even if, if we sat here and told you exactly which ones did or didn't, there's other vagaries in the future that we can't, you know, uh, determine in that cost escalation, things of that nature. So having said that, I think it would be prudent to take some or all of those funds and have those match up with some of the bigger building projects. You know, and if they are not used or not needed as renewable energy contingency, if you will, then they could go ahead and be spent on retrofits there. The problem is that some of those building projects, I think at the end of this exercise are going to be a little bit further out in the future. So you may have to wait on the use of those funds. That might be one way to mitigate this confusion.
Can I jump in? Sorry, I think I'm on a bit of a, I'm on a bit of a lag, so I keep trying to jump in when somebody's already talking. I apologize for that. So, uh, the way I'm hearing this is it sounds like nobody really knows exactly how much we're going to need for solar in these projects. But if we know that a number of projects have had their budgets reduced and we want to incorporate solar and hopefully we'll even have a policy that's going to mandate it, then it sounds to me like we can put more money into solar sooner, use that to pay for the solar portions of those projects. And then that frees up money for those projects to be better facilities. So if we want the East Side Library to be fully solar, which I think we all do, and we're going to have a policy that mandates that, well, even if that's going to be built into their budget, you know, they're probably going to have to cut out other things to reach it if we don't have buckets to pull from elsewhere. So in my mind, it makes sense to have this money available sooner, especially hearing Mr. Wharton say that they could use a half a million a year just to update facilities now. And I, I guess I'd like to remind everybody too, that this is something we get a return on our investment on, you know, we save money in the general fund by having, you know, better sustainability in our infrastructure. So in my mind, one of the best things we can spend money on right away is, is solar. And I'd love to see, you know, some of those seven digit numbers moved into quarter one personally.
Okay. That's why we're having this discussion. That's why I asked that question, you know, specifically because I wanted to hear, hear from y'all.
So it sounds like there's certainly interest. Well, I mean, I think we can say from the very high level, interest in all projects being as renewable as possible and as efficient as possible. And so given that dynamic interest in almost as an insurance policy, having more of those renewability dollars earlier in the program, even if that means we bank them until they sync up with either renovation or new construction. If it comes to pass that some of those dollars are needed for the new construction project. And I think it's understandable that, you know, Um, and I think it's understandable that, you know, until we get into pre-engineering for many of these, there's just not going to be certainty about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said. And, and a couple of points to that. One is we can always come back and adjust the tier funding schedule as we get into it, start seeing where things are going. You know, there's going to be some natural attenuation that's going to occur in this that would allow us to come here and get back in front of y'all if we need to, to change something and move it around. And then the other point was, I can assure you, I've sat in on a committee yesterday, as Andrew did as well, sat in on a committee and some of the questions challenging to the architects in this case were sustainability questions. Those are in the conversations. Everyone that I've heard, those are some of the first questions.
All right. Want to move on to the next cluster?
Yep. All right, Patty. Um, so that's, I'm, I'm kind of separated those top and I heard you in there that, um, we need to go back and pull some money up front and you're going to, you're going to see, uh, as we do that, because we'll, we'll go through the exercise on this one, and then I'll explain to you what spreadsheets two and three are. Uh, let me go on through the, the rest of the projects. Leisure Services, you can see , uh, Holland Park. And again, these were done with conversations from the directors for the most part. So Holland Youth Sports, we, we spread that one out. That's a project that can be done or projects that can be done individually. So we broke those into yearly to try to spread those out through the years, uh, with the first one starting in tier six, which is FY26. Athens West Park, that's a primarily a property purchase. So we tried to put some funds, you know, not too far up front, but that's one of those that if property became available, especially one, uh, you know, sizable piece that you would need as a minimum, uh, that we put some dudes, we went ahead and put a little bit of due diligence money in FY25, uh, with the rest of the funds coming later since don't really know, there's not a, an identified piece of property yet for that particular, for project 14. Sandy Creek Nature Center, that's not a, not a big project. We put it in the middle. Um, certainly wish it could be further up and it's not a lot of money. And that's something that might move up later if we get some savings. Memorial Park, that's an important one. Kent has, has reiterated to me several times of the need for that because of liability type issues. And that one is only can be spread out over a couple of years, but that's drainage, uh, and some spillway and, and issues with the, with the dam to be looking at. So we've kept that in the front. And again, this, this particular spreadsheet is hearing from y'all, other than obviously I didn't do a good job on the renewable energy, but the rest of these are pulled up toward the front that we heard from the last discussions that we had. So Beach Haven Park, obviously we've had a lot of conversation on that. Originally had it further out. Um, recent conversations, uh, and, and emails, what we did is pulled 300,000 into FY22, which would be for a master plan and some site planning with an additional, with a skip of a year and then an additional 700,000 for, uh, access, more a formal access, uh, purchase of property for that. And then some, maybe some minimal trails. And when I get to the end of this one, I, Mike or Kent might want to go more in depth and then put, uh, more of the park for, uh, further out in quarter three, which would be, and just because of the type of park that it is and the conservation easements that are associated with it and the protection of the historical and the eco, uh, the ecosystems that, um, I don't know, is this appropriate time, Blaine, to discuss more on that one?
I, I think so. You know, it's, it's gotten a lot of attention and, and comment from, uh, you, Mayor and Commissioner, you've heard from constituents. And, uh, and, and we have looked very hard at, at how to provide access in a way that, uh, balances the, uh, you know, the, the, the needs of the land, uh, before, uh, a master plan is done. Uh, I think we can all agree with, with, if you read the Beach Haven SPOSS proposal, that there's simply not enough money to do all those things. A bridge across the river, uh, restoring the house, you know, the trails, the, that type of thing. So like most things, there's a limited amount of funds and a whole bunch of priorities that really we can only get through with a very robust and open master planning process. Now, the question you've, you've, you've not disagreed with that. Uh, I haven't heard any disagreement about that, but can we provide immediate access? And I think that this brings up a very good point on many of these projects. Uh, what you don't see on the screen in front of you are the operational costs that are associated with the projects, whether putting them, you know, creating a new building that needs new attention going forward or delaying projects, delaying building a building, uh, that if there are tenants in a, a current building, then you have to continue to keep that one up. Uh, you know, so there are operational costs and this is a great place to bring that up. Um, staff has looked at this. We do think some, some pedestrian public access at Beach Haven is possible, but, but there will be, need to be some operational dollars associated with maintaining the property as well as, uh, the staff associated with that, uh, to do that. So, um, that, that access issue isn't necessarily on the table tonight, but I think that that was one of the suggestions made of moving funds up to provide that access. We think we can provide some limited access to Beach Haven immediately. It would not necessarily take SPOSS dollars so much as it would take operational dollars. And, uh, Kent or Mike, would you care to add anything to that?
Yes, I, I will, Blaine. Thank you very much. Um, you know, we're looking at needing some staff. We actually need staff out there now based on the use of that property currently. If we're going to be protecting the cultural, environmental and historical resources that are on that property, we've, uh, Mike can speak to setting up those cameras, but it's, the cameras have witnessed, excuse me, activity that, um, is less than desirable going on out there that we need to be monitoring if we will, our investment. So if we are actually going to continue to authorize people access to that site, then we only anticipate numbers to grow the number of visitors because they have been, uh, especially since we, tours were opened up in support of this SPOSS project. It exposed the property to a lot of people that were seeing it for the first time. Um, and it's a great problem to have, but it's created issues nonetheless that staff has to be able to manage and monitor that we just currently do not have the resources in all of our trails and open spaces division of our department, uh, because of the 45 plus miles of trails that they're trying to monitor and all the open acreage that they're trying to deal with. So, uh, to be able to have a, a position out there, both one part-time, one full-time of vehicle to get them there, a little bit of equipment, uh, to maintain that property is pretty critical. And I'll let Mike speak to sustainability's needs.
From an operational standpoint, we just, we have to, it makes it a little bit more complex when you're trying to do some of our restoration activities around, uh, having people on site where, as opposed to not having people on site. And what the, in putting the cameras up, we were really looking at how do we protect those historic resources? Cause we has had some vandalism and, and some of our ecological resources, we've had some vandalism and looking at it. But what it really showed us is how people were interacting with the property, which highlighted the need for operation. Most, uh, truthfully, most people were using it well, uh, and some of the, and then, and I understand, we understand exactly why they want to get there. It's a beautiful spot. A, a lot of the damage was being done because people didn't understand what, how they were interacting with it was creating the damage. And having staff on site to help educate is critical to protection and to help guide people in what things work well and what things really could result in a degradation of the site. And, and that's really, to, to Kent's point and needs, that's really where that need comes in. My needs are mainly around just having to have extra staff available. So I make sure when we're doing our restoration activities, it's done safely with public present as opposed to right now, public's not there.
Thanks, Mike. Other questions?
Well, you might imagine I have a, a question here since it's in my district. This is Jesse. Sorry, I'm keeping my video off because it's really glitching out on me. I apologize, y'all. Um, I, uh, I really appreciate y'all's comments and clarifications here. Did I understand correctly that independent of the master planning process, if there's operational money to meet those staff needs, that we could open up Beach Haven to minimal kind of trail use even sooner than the, completing the master plan?
Well, staff, uh, Kent and Mike, and, and we've all discussed, um, you know, foot access only for walking and exploring the site, uh, was something that we think we could accommodate through some operational spend. And, and we would just say that, you know, again, we think a master planning effort is going to be very important to help dictate, uh, the spending of the rest of those precious dollars.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, if that's possible, I think that meets the vast majority of the desires of the, the folks that we've been hearing from. And you know, I know that everybody on this body kind of received a whole flood of emails all at once there. That was honestly a fraction of what I've been getting from folks in the district. Uh, really how this ended up on my radar was from people, uh, just continually reaching out to me over this past year. Um, and I, you know, I think those cameras, while we're seeing use right now, including use that might be concerning, I, I would just, uh, like to share that I don't think we're seeing an accurate depiction of what the use probably was before the cameras went up because now people who are more likely to abide by the signage and, and the cameras are, are less likely to be there. And I think there was quite a bit of use of the space that was, as Mr. Warren pointed out, like perfectly appropriate. And if we had a way of opening it up to more use, you know, with some staff support, uh, but just the public being there, especially with the number of folks who have offered volunteer support. Uh, I believe there's even an organization that would love to sign a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding to, to formalize supporting some of that. Um, I, you know, I think some of those dangers that we're worried about to the property would be mitigated just by the presence of, of people being around.
Well, and I will say too, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hull. I think those are well noted. And, uh, and, and, uh, Leisure Services Director Kent Kilpatrick said tonight that, uh, you know, there are lots of other properties. And I will say that the mayor and commission in the last decade, you know, we've really added a lot of green space and, and trails and facilities. So I think that's, you know, and that's been possible because of SPOSS, uh, quite frankly. And with that, and a lot of folks don't think about it, comes the operational, you know, got to take care of it and you've got to, you know, maintain it. And, uh, and I will say that, uh, I was having this conversation with the commissioner this week, you know, adding positions, uh, is, is one way to really, you know, make your costs go up because you just have to sustain that over time. And I can say as a manager, uh, and has certainly Kent can attest to this, you know, we have tried to get by with as little staff as possible to manage these things. And I think we're just getting to a point to where, you know, if we, we continue to add, we're going to have to, you know, have the staff to support that. And that's really, so to say all that, Commissioner Hull, this is a solution, but it, you know, going into the FY22 budget formulation, you know, that's going to compete with a lot of other priorities that are out there too.
I might also add, if I could, that, um, we're, we're beginning to see similar activity at the Talassee property. Uh, soon we're going to be, we have already begun hearing from neighbors and that's going to continue to grow. My hope is that by adding a position here at Beach Haven to address this property, perhaps it can also help us address other things on the west side. Uh, Burton Park is getting ready to add a restroom and a picnic shelter, which is going to bring additional people to that site. Talassee is starting to see similar activities. So, um, this position can serve a much greater purpose perhaps than just Beach Haven, but it is definitely needed at that Beach Haven property.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Kent, Mike, Blaine, and good questions, Commissioner Hull. Move on down to Talassee Forest Nature Preserve. Uh, we've got that out in quarter three, starting in quarter three, stretched it out as well to try to move it up as far as we could. Bishop Park, I think Kent, um, Kent would like to see this sooner. It, we, it's got to be at the most spread over two, at two years. It's most we can spread that out and make that unless the, we really have to do it all at one time, but we were able to figure out how to do it over two fiscal years to spread it out a little bit, but that's a, a major project. Um, Kent, do you want to add anything or just move on on this one?
Well, I, I would just quickly say, and I think some of it has been said before, but the leak there is just continuing to grow. Um, we are losing an average of about six inches of water a day out of that pool. And keeping it chemically balanced is becoming next to impossible. Um, it has to constantly receive chlorine in order to be able to stay in some kind of balance for it to remain open. If the leak was stabilized, we could continue to spend in excess of 20 something thousand dollars in water, which we are currently each year. And we're also spending a lot in pool supplies. However, if the leak continues to show the pattern that it has, then it's just going to continue to get worse, which is going to jeopardize being able to open that pool in coming summers. Uh, we've had experts in, in several different companies look at it and nobody can exactly pinpoint why the water is leaking the way it is or even where the water is going.
Matt. Question, Kent. What, what, for the 1.7 million from 2011, what at Bishop Park, was that going to go for?
The one point, that's going to begin. So if you recall, the whole aquatic area right there is going to be rebuilt. We're going to rebuild that pool. Uh, obviously there's got to be designs and, uh, in, in all the preparation for that. But we got to rebuild the pool. There's going to be additional, uh, splash pad that goes with it, a pool bathhouse. So all the amenities that go around and with that Bishop Park pool.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is if you're prepared to spend 2011 SPOSS dollars, can we save those dollars and use these SPOSS dollars for Bishop Park improvements?
The 2011 money for Bishop was for the roof or the replacement for the roof or the gym, not the, not the pool.
Right.
Could you use this money for, for that?
It's not enough to fix the pool.
And we can, and as I mentioned previously, and, uh, Andrew's staff can attest to, we've had significant leaks. We had to shut down the gymnastics center and empty all the equipment because of two different floods this past year alone. Uh, and so the leaks there are pretty, uh, really need to be addressed.
Okay. Another question?
Yeah, I, I, I had one really fast, uh, and I guess this would be for Kent. And, and you started to touch on it anyways, but with the, the cost that we're seeing, like you said, those are the, that was the cost that we foresee if the leak is stabilized. I mean, do we have estimates? Like you said, if it continues to degrade at the, at the pace it is now, how much that's going to cost us in operational dollars over these next four years?
Well, looking at, at water use patterns, um, they have increased by two to $3,000 each year, it seems. Uh, but then it, it just seems to have a mind of its own. We went through two years to where it stabilized and, and didn't move at all. And then it started to go up again. The unfortunate part is that we can afford for much more of an increase because it's going to result in not being able to chemically stabilize the water. And when we're unable to do that, then the, the health department will not allow us to operate the pool.
And that, that was going to be another question is like, what are the environmental impacts of us having to put so much chlorine and other chemicals to stabilize situation? It, what's the environmental impact of having that leaking into the, into the groundwater around there?
Well, obviously it can't be good. We do, we don't know. We did, like I said before, we just don't know exactly where this water is going. Um, you know, so if we could figure that out, that's going to be a significant help and help answer that question. But you do have a lot of chlorine that's leaving that pool, uh, with, with, as that leak goes, that six inches each day.
So again, that's, that's one that, um, if Kent has preference, he, he told me that was his number two priority and he'd like to see it moved up even further than when we have it. But you'll see in a minute when we back up and look at, at where we are in the balancing of this spreadsheet. We'll talk some more about it. Fair Hollow Zoo improvements, um, that was one that was mentioned, uh, I think at the last work session. And again, we, we moved it up as far as we could. Uh, I think that one is one that Kent said could be broken up into some individual projects. And there have, had been some improvements made out there already, uh, that have, uh, been significant and, and have helped a lot. So we put it in quarter two. Moving into some of the projects that, uh, I heard more than one comment on last time, which was broadband, which we all know has certainly come to the forefront. So we've put it right in the front. And even though you see it spread out, that's just a natural spread because of the, the RFP that we're about to go through for broadband and, um, just that process will get, will take some time, but we would predict and to start installation, hopefully in FY22 of the major portions of it, depending on how the responses we get back and which, um, which response to the RFP is chosen ultimately. And East Athens Youth and Community Center, another one. And East Athens Youth and Community Center, another one that we've received, a lot of comments are on. So we have it starting in FY22, which is only six months away. Animal Shelter, we've got it in FY25. I think it, we would like, it's like any, like a lot of these, I wish we could pull it up further. But that's where we're showing it for now. Eastside Public Library Project, moved it up. I think that's where we had it last time, but we kept it up there because of the comments that we received from Mayor and Commission. Recovered material processing and reuse, another one, I've worked with Suki closely on this one and give her an opportunity to say something. She was, she worked really well with me to try to break that one up, to phase it as best that we could. We couldn't put a gap in between it. There wasn't a logical place. It would allow us to, to wait a year or two and break it up more. But I think this is the, the best we can do in breaking that up. Suki, do you want to say anything?
I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you all for the consideration. As many of you know, our facility is 25 years old and certain elements to our facility are original. So they're 25 years old. Our facility too was built to handle newspaper specifically. And as we know now, newspaper is almost non-existent. We don't even separate it now separately from other paper streams. So that makes us archaic in that, in that fashion. Some of our equipment is, was put in to handle more newspaper and more office paper that we're just not seeing anymore. And we don't expect to see it anymore. So that is also something that needs drastically changed. And there's a lot of robotic technology that we hope to have in the next facility that's not compatible with the current facility. So all of that being said, the more we can change and adapt to the new mark, the new tech, excuse me, the new materials that are coming in, the more revenues we can make on the backend. So that's what makes our facility even more challenging. We're a facility for a previous time when material, the material stream was drastically different. But yes, we, we asked to be pushed back originally. Robert was, when he came to us, because we're right now, our RFP for a new MRF contractor just was finalized by our consultant. A staff is viewing it now and it will go out on the streets at the beginning of January. And by October of 2021, we'll have potentially a new MRF operator. So they may come in with lots of new ideas on how they can help us construct a MRF. So we did want it pushed back slightly, but any new contractor is going to be, have expectations to have equipment that meet 2021 specs, not 1995 specs. Thank you.
Thanks, Suki. Well said. Any, any questions?
Suki, thank you for that update. How much money are we losing through the general dollars in keeping this facility, keeping the maintenance up currently? And how much do you project as new modern technology comes out and recycling methods change? How much do you think we're losing?
I probably need a little more time, Commissioner Davenport, to calculate that. But I can tell you capital, we, this coming year, we're going to be doubling what we ask for in capital. If we have to remain in this facility for 10 years, which we're trying to plan 10 years just in case, you know, we're pushed back in this splosh cycle. We're, we're trying to look at keeping duct tape and paper clips on hand to keep us running. No, I'm kidding, not duct tape and paper clips, but we, we don't want to, like I said, we've had to double our, well, you'll see that we'll have to double our capital request for some of the improvements to the MRF if we are planning to be in this facility for 10 years. The facility is small also, Commissioner Davenport, which makes it very challenging. It's a, the smallest single stream facility in the United States. We've got lots of height, but not lots of length or width, which makes it very challenging for new processing equipment. But if you'll allow me, I can run some numbers and get you a more accurate picture of what we would lose year over year by keeping the same facility for 10 or more years.
Thanks, Suki. Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, Suki. Well said. The next one is the Mental Health Recovery Facility that we've got shown in quarter three. The Welcome Center in this scenario, and again, this is, this is a scenario for talking points. The Welcome Center, because of some work that had already been done there, some discussions with staff, we, we moved that into the fourth quarter. Transportation, Public Works, Infrastructure Related Projects Airport Capital. I went back to Mike after the last work session, asked if we could either spread something out or moot shift any, which he did. He came back and we shifted between 23 and 24, I believe it was. We moved, moved out of over a million dollars. I think that was the case. But what you'll find on these, most of these are, are matches to some type, whether it's an FAA or a GDOT grant, which are rate grants, typically they're, they're 90, 10, 90%, you know, somebody else, 10% our match. Or maybe 90 slash five slash five in some cases. So Mike, do you want to add anything to these?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Yeah, as Robert mentioned, we did move several projects from 22 and 23. And so really all that's left is just critical projects in those two fiscal years. And they're, they all relate to safety. These are items that the FAA has come to us. We get inspected once a year and these are items that the FAA has come to us and say, you know, you need to get this done. You need to get this done. Well, they only say it so many years, you know, before they really start taking action, you know, on you. So we're kind of at that critical point on, on the projects for fiscal year 22 and 23 that we really need to get them done. And, and they need to be done because it's a safety issue with the airplanes, the corporate that we have, especially Delta and the other charters that we have. They're heavy enough airplanes that the asphalt that we want to repair needs to be replaced. And along with the signage and the lights too. We don't get any money from the Athens Clark County General Fund and we're self deficient, which I'm proud to say. So the matching fund is very important, you know, for us to get these projects done. And as Robert said, it's good money in 22 and 23, it's like 1.6 million. We'll get roughly about 11 million from the FAA and the state just for those. And if it's a federal project, we'll get 95% funding. And if it's a state project, it's usually 75%. So I tried to move what we could and, but these, these, these two years are pretty critical to get these projects done. We also, in 21, we have, we're going to start in March, partially, a partial project on Taxway Alpha. And so what 22 is, is basically to finish that project. We weren't able to get all the funding for that. So we were able to start the project and get that pavement up to, up to where it should be. And then also, so 22, we'll be able to finish it out and, and then we'll be good to go there. Yeah. So those are critical.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions of, of Mike?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you elaborate a bit for us, Mr. Matthews, on, on just what would happen if this got pushed back? Because coming into this meeting, if I'm being perfectly honest, I was looking at this project in number 28, the Mental Health Recovery Facility, and personally would love to advocate for kind of swapping the timelines of those two. So I'm just curious to hear the.
Sure.
The details there.
Oh, I'd be glad to tell you. The FAA, like I say, they, they pretty much run the show. So if they think it's unsafe, they will shut you down. They did this in Macon and I don't know if Judd was there at the time. But Macon went through this where they were unsafe and the FAA came in and shut them down. They had to halt all 139 operations. Now, the pavement we have here, it's pretty old. It's, it's probably going on 30 years, I would think, that in some areas of this pavement too. If it rains and we have Delta come in, you can see even the pavement moving where it, it, it forces water up, you know, from the pavement. So we actually, that portion of it, we spent a little money and, and concreted that. But, but it really, really is at the critical point where it's, it's a safety issue. And the FAA, like I said, they've, they've come, I've been here about two and a half years. And both years, they say, you know, you need to get this done. And they're only going to say it so many times before that happens.
And could you just clarify, how much of that 5.1 million is required for this critical upgrade, this critical repair?
Um, really, it's the, the 1.6 fiscal year 22 and 23 is where I put those projects because they were so critical. I needed to get those done as soon as possible. Everything after that is not as critical and can be moved even, you know, through the years. You know, we would like to build a transient hangar, but that's nothing critical. I mean, there's much more critical things than transit hangar on this list. So we can keep moving that as well. And the only other thing that I would, that I would say out of that five, not in the 22 or 23, but somewhere, you know, we would have to do a new parking lot because we really do not have a whole lot of parking here. And then also Taxi Way Bravo, which is to the second, to the second runway, that will have to be done eventually, but it's not as critical right now. So that, that can probably wait. I mean, FAA really hasn't been honest about that one. So I'm really not worried about that right now.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying those. If I, if I may just for a minute, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess I'd like to encourage my colleagues to think about the Mental Health Recovery Facility. I know we kind of moved past that one pretty quickly. There's nobody from Advantage Behavior on the call, unfortunately. But, you know, a lot of these things that we're talking about incur operational costs for us upkeep as well. One of the really amazing things about that project is once we build it, they handle the running of the facility. And it has not only an immense cost savings for the human impact that I think we can all imagine of people having somewhere other than jail or prison to go, but also would save us money with the, the cost of putting people in jail, which is run by the county instead of through this facility. So I really feel like that project's a big win and I'd love to see us find a way to fund that sooner in the schedule. And it sounds like maybe some of that money could come from these less urgent airport improvements. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah. And Kelly, I'd like to follow up on Jesse if I could real quick. I don't disagree with you at all, Jesse, on that. You know, I certainly see the Mental Health Recovery Facility project as a human expenditure that ought to be towards the front. And I would suggest perhaps taking a look at moving, shifting that, the one above it, the recovered material processing reuse a bit back in order to get that and also maybe doing some from, from the airport that's allowable, that's non-safety issue related at this point in time. Just my two cents worth.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. I noted both of those. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Vincent Drive Sidewalk Project in this scenario, have it in quarter three and four? Talassee. Go ahead.
Thanks, Robert. Yeah, on, on the Vincent Drive one, I mean, that's, that's one that I kind of brought up at the, at the last time we discussed this.
Yes, sir.
About wanting to see that one prioritized when we're, when we're, again, going, backing up to what Commissioner Hull brought up, just having this kind of human facing, more equitable projects need to be prioritized. I'm concerned that what I'd argue is one of the most dangerous routes in our community that is so heavily populated with transit service and a park there that has zero sidewalks and zero shoulder to even walk on. And yet many low income and working class families living there having to utilize those resources. I, I really find it just kind of unacceptable for us to be pushing out a project like that, that was one of the most favored and quickly passed by the Splosh Committee and pushing it out a decade, especially when it's kind of a, one of the smaller projects. And, and yeah, and if we could possibly get some savings from some of the, the less prioritized, less urgent airport capital improvements. And honestly, I would even say like, I am, I am a huge fan of the Water Trails Project, want to see that move forward too. I still think those basic, the ability for a person to walk safely to and from the bus or the park or their home is kind of needs to be higher prioritized.
Okay. Anybody?
And this is Mike, I would agree with that. We, you know, similar over to Mitchell Bridge and Timothy Road. So if you can find a way to do it for Vincent Drive, that would, that would be good as well. But again, go back to, you know, any, any of these that are human activity cost, I think will help. I mean, moving, again, moving the Recovered Material Processing Center back a little bit. I know Suki don't like me to, she's probably wanting to jump through the computer at me. But, but those, those two seem to be a little bit higher human priorities than, 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 than that.
Can I jump in real quick, Mr. Mayor? So I, I hear what Commissioner Hamby is saying about the covered material, but at the same time, it's costing taxpayer money for upkeep. And we, it needs to be modern and the less stuff we can send into the, to the landfill or gets thrown away. It's not recyclable, actually goes to our landfill, excuse me, and it saves us money. So I, I agree with the human capital as well, but at the same time, we got to think about the taxpayers as well.
And I would agree with that.
Um, I'm curious as to why the water trail is, is so much on the front end. Is there some, some reasoning behind that? Where it seems like, you know, some of these, so many of these other projects have been pushed to the back end. But why is the water trails in that first tier?
Kent can respond to that. Some of that was matching some grants that they've already got coming in, but Kent?
That's, that's right. That largest amount is a grant match. So we, we have gotten word that we're a strong candidate for that grant funding. So this allows that match so that we could continue the first phase. Logic thinking of those years that follow it is that while we're in that mode of building and there are small ticket items, that we could continue to finish out that project. Now those other small ticket items could potentially be pushed back because they're not tied to the grant. Just the initial, on the middle of Coney, down at Macon Highway is where the main takeout point will be, this grant funded.
Okay. Thank you.
And back to Vincent Drive, we've got some from Transportation and Public Works on here, either Steve or, Stephen, do you want to say anything?
I can jump in and just to, just to throw some more thoughts to you. Of course, you know, over here at Public Works, we'd love to build that out. But, you know, things to remember, you all just approved the multi-use path over on Jefferson River Road, which would tie directly to this project. So there's, there's a course potential that, you know, if we could time it out, right, we could, we might be able to bundle that and save some money. But also a reminder that that multi-use path would be bike and ped, whereas this is right now, just pedestrian. So if you wanted to look at that project and talk about potential for turning it into a bike ped project as well, we have to think about available funding. There's not really bike funding available now. There may be at the next T-Splosh. So, and then one more final timing consideration is staff capacity. So we have pushed a lot of bike ped projects through in these, in these last few months and will continue to do so. I, I would, I would just caution that we, we want to make sure staff has the capacity to inspect and oversee the, the contract construction for these. So we, we would need to think hard about if we did move this up, what tier that would move to.
And thank you for that, Stephen. And I agree. I mean, obviously if we could do some coupling with those things for some cost savings, obviously that would be fantastic. But if not, I mean, I haven't argued necessarily that we have this FY21, FY22. I just feel like pushing this back when it's such an integral need for that community, all the way to, you know, heck, when I'm going to be 50 years old, it's just not acceptable. And also like, not only that, right, but like the kids growing up in the area right now, whose families voted for this Splosh project, seeing that on the ballot, those kids would be in college or moved away before it's ever even built. So.
Hey, most of your parks will probably still work when you're 50.
Well, if I could offer two, and this is what makes this such a hard exercise for everybody, is that. is that unfortunately, and we can speak more to the borrowing and the timing of that here shortly, I think Robert's got that planned. But we're going to have to move some things further back. And let's just say that of all the projects, I think there was 1.2 billion dollars in projects that were presented and some very worthy projects didn't make the list. So every single one of these are needed projects. It's just that in trying to, to balance the revenue coming in with the expenses going out and not, you know, go overboard on interest expense and preserve more for projects. As part of this exercise, there are some projects that are going to have to be moved into the out years, unfortunately. And that's just what we're looking for you to help us determine. We hear you. There's things that need to be moved up and done tomorrow. Uh, but, but to offset that, some other projects are going to have to be moved back.
Mayor, can I add something here?
And I'd like to say something as well.
And, uh, I, I, I will say, well, you know, when you, when you turn 50, things start to break. So Tim, Tim is right on that. So, um, um, look at Andy. Look, he looks horrible there on the screen. But, uh, I guess I will say this about, uh, having to move some of these projects forward. And I keep going back to 2011. You know, we've got, according to the report, almost a million dollars there in interest for 2011. And one of the categories for 2011 is, uh, is fire equipment and safety. And we also have that in this 2020 project. So in the first three tiers, first three quarter, first quarter of this, we're spending almost a million dollars in fire safety. And I'm just wondering why we couldn't transfer or why we couldn't use those 2011 dollars for that fire safety, safety that we need here. So that frees up that million dollars, if you see where, you see where I'm going with all that.
And also at the beginning of. Just, uh, mention the 2011 dollars really briefly, having had to look at those both in the context of alleviating some general fund operating capital as well as trying to think how we may need to flex, um, for lots of other projects that are going to come in, uh, overbid, you know, the Firefly Bridge being a really good recent example. There will be lots of pretty dramatic needs that, that will draw those dollars, potentially even including some of the live pipe stream replacement.
Oh, and I don't disagree with that, but this, I was just looking at the, the unallocated interest. That doesn't, that doesn't account for, uh, monies that are going to be left over from, from some of the projects there in, in 2011. But I will say this too, at the beginning of the, another option is at the beginning of the conversation. You know, all the way over in FY 32, tier 12, you know, we're anticipating a projection of $6 million that's not going to go towards interest. I mean, I don't know if it will or not, so maybe, maybe we take the risk and say that it's, that it's not and use that and spread it out to see if we can get some of these tiers early on and, and go from there. I mean, Robert said early on, this is something, this is sort of a a, 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 a changing, it could be a changing document. So, uh, if we're trying to address some of these human elements early on, that may be a way to do it.
If I can address the $6 million in project four, um, that money is not available to be used until tier 12. That's why it's sitting in tier 12. So while that may be a cost saving to us, if it's not used for interest, you couldn't allocate that to another project until tier 12. Does that make sense?
Not really, but I'll accept your explanation, I suppose.
Yeah. All, all these monies that are sitting here is how we anticipate spending them. So whatever tier it is sitting in, then that's when we expect to be using them. So this 6 million is expected to not be spent until tier 12.
No, I get that. If you're telling me, if you're telling me that that 6 million is, is, is going to be extra money throughout the life of this, of this SPOS, then if you're projecting 6 million left over at the end of the day, then let's not, let's project, let's project 2 million left over at the end of the day.
Well, the bonding is a moving target as far as all the expenses until it's a done deal. And Tom Woodward can, um, you know, can educate us on that, um, a little bit more. But this one here is just an estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, you have something as well?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, what's, what's kind of going through my mind, you know, as we're trying to figure out, and we have, you know, a lot of, I mean, these are all good projects, but obviously, you know, we've got to figure out a priority. And I mean, to me, it seems that, that there are four maybe guiding principles that we might think about as we move through here in terms of trying to tier, tier things. So I think one is think about projects that will make us money and, and front end them rather than back end them. The second is projects that will save us money and they should have a higher priority than, than those that are going to cost us money. And so that would be things like, you know, the renewable energy, for instance. I, I think projects that revolve around the, um, intellectual development of our young people. So things like the library, which we all seem to agree needs to be, you know, front loaded and the youth development center, because those will have long-term payoff for our community. But if you don't do them when people are young, you never get to catch up on that. And then I think the fourth guiding principle is that I think we should be looking at renovating facilities before we think about building new ones. So to me, as I'm looking through them, those are kinds of the, sort of the four things that would, um, you know, shape how I, if I were doing this on my own, how I would be thinking about, um, about the tiering. And so some of the things that are kind of purely, you know, ni- nice to have, kind of recreational type things, I think to me are much less important to have upfront than, than some of the things that either make us money, save us money, are involved in the long-term development of our, uh, youth and that are, you know, renovations rather than new construction. So that's, uh, if that helps anybody, but that's kind of the way I'm thinking about it.
Thanks, Andy. And, and Robert, I think you've just got kind of a handful of additional projects on the list. Let's go ahead and walk through those and, and, um, maybe we can kind of do, uh, stop and sort of summarize what we've heard. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And, and we're having more dialogue than we will on spreadsheets two and three. But this, I thought it was important to see where we were on some of these and why we had them where they were, but also needed feedback, uh, from. So this has all been good. Talassee Road, uh, we had out as well. I say we, you know, again, we were trying to, to balance some things, uh, new versus old, for example. Jackson Street artwork in this scenario, that was one that had been mentioned as well. Did I skip something? No, so we had it. We actually have that one out. Um, I know there was conversation of having it up and it certainly makes some sense to be tied into, uh, the Bethel project. So that's there for discussion. Water trails, we talked about and live stream replacements, uh, is, is not a huge number. And so we put it, uh, in, in the second quarter to complement some other projects that I know that they're, that that, uh, Transportation Public Works is working on. So at this point, um, you good mayor, if I, if we do just a little bit of, I was going to let Patty move some things around and explain what the red that we're seeing at the top? Sure. Okay. So really this, this exercise in, in addition to showing you where we are, um, you can see that we're, we're way out of balance here, uh, to the tune of 24 to 25 million in tiers six and seven, which doesn't mean, and that's why I want to do this exercise, I think it's important to see the effect that moving something and when you move it, you typically have to move it past the red. So if you see, uh, tiers one, two, three, FY 21, 22, 23, you're thinking, well, there's 19, 18, we're underspending there. We're, we're not. What you're going to see is if you took a project in the red and moved it up to the black in quarter one, there's a cascading effect all the way through the tiers, which is going to make you worse. What you have to do is figure out if you want this to balance without borrowing, and that's a discussion. Uh, that's why David and Tom are, are on here and others from finance. If we, um, borrowing is of course, you know, we look at interest and it comes off the top and it means less projects at the end, or at least the scopes of them. So I wanted to take a couple here just to, so you can see the impact when, when Patty moves them. So let's grab one that's got some size to it, Patty, like the broadband. Not saying, I'm not advocating to move it out, but I just want you to see the red at the top and see what that does. So there's one that's in, in the black. It's, it's in the first quarter. It's front ended. She moves it to the back. So you can see with that one, we took one of 6 million dollars and we're able to drop obviously from 25 million to, to 20 million, I mean, to less than 20, so 19. So that makes sense, but that took her moving it literally from the first three years to the back three years to do that. So show what happens if you move that just to the yellow. We move it just from quarter one to quarter two, Patty. So there, again, we moved it, we moved it an entire three years, but you had no effect on anything below. On quarter three and quarter four, you're still at the 25, 25 million. So even when you take something to move it three years, uh, it has no effect on a good portion of the spreadsheet.
In order to balance this spreadsheet, you have to take items that are all the way back over here in the black and you're going to have to move them past the red, which means that it's got to go all the way out here somewhere. For us to start seeing some, some black numbers instead of red here. You can move this around. We, in fact, before turning this sheet in to you guys tonight, we moved some of these projects that we knew were going to be, um, you, some of you were going to be very passionate about. We took those dollars and, and moved them like closer instead of quarter four, quarter three or quarter two even. But the bottom line is we're still red because we don't have any money left over in those years to cover any of that. So, um, the task is to find something here in the black or in the green columns that, um, that you're going to feel comfortable with moving back here, unfortunately. Something else to think about too, um, one of the department directors said this in some of our meetings, I can't remember who, but it is important that we, that our citizens and constituents see, um, some good projects going on here at the end of our program, because we're going to be, uh, vying and, um, campaigning to try to, to start our next program. So we definitely want them to see some activity out here.
And David, did you want to add anything at this point before we, um, move to the other spreadsheets? And in addition to the, the 6 million dollars that was a question in tier 12 that Patty, uh, had answered?
Well, I don't really have anything to add to the logic of what Patty said. I mean, you know, these projects have to be spaced out one way or the other and they all can't be upfront. So it really just becomes a question of ranking, uh, what's most important to the mayor commission to be, uh, completed upfront.
Okay.
So, so Robert, do you, do you want to discuss how the other two broad options vary from the first?
Yep. We're good. All right, Patty, let's go to number, uh, two. Okay. Spreadsheet two. Again, is what we tried to do, and I, and I already know things like the renewable that I would need to go back, move some things up, which of course makes things, uh, red. You've got to move something in its place or you've got to, you know, find a, another mechanism of funding. This one is closer. If you look at it, there's less red, more black. And the reason being in this case, project one, uh, just to, I'm not saying that I'm advocating to move it there, but project one, the space modernization, facilities modernization is moved out to quarter four. That's where I'm showing construction for that and the renovation, but it would actually start closer to FY 28 for the siding and the design, or the siding could be done earlier and then the design. Obviously that's a significant move, but that project is one of the, the big three that hasn't started and it doesn't have the privy, private funding associated with it like projects two and three. So I simply put that out there to, to show you the impact that even moving that out to quarter four, if we shift down, and I'm not going to talk as much about projects, um, one through four, five through 27. Oh, I didn't mean five through 27, but the, um, the, uh, public safety or the sustainability, I think we talked about those a good bit. Obviously, certainly we'll go back to them if you'd like to. But really as you start in leisure services, even with moving project one out like we did, to get this down to even a $6 million, um, red and keeping in mind that this shows the same renewable energy that we had in spreadsheet one. So you, you've asked me to move some of that up, so this is going, these reds will be more significant in quarter two and probably three. So if you look at these, um, let's see which projects that we moved out to make this closer. Okay. Thanks, Patty. In this case, Holland was the same, Athens West, Sandy Creek, Memorial. Beach Haven's the same. In this one, let's see, Talas, Talassee's the same. Bishop Park's the same. This one, Bear Hollow is moved out. We had it further in two and three. This has it in three and four. Now broadband's still up, so everything else. The mental health is moved up, I believe in this one some. And Jackson is moved up in this one. So in this one, a lot of those projects that you talked about moving up are up. Uh, one or two were shifted back, but the biggest thing is that, um, project one is, is moved out significantly in this one. So this is, I think maybe we go on to three and we, we showed these and the drastic difference in them.
Kelly?
Yeah.
So I, I hear what you're saying, Robert, but I, I, I think it's important whilst we're looking at this table here, as Blaine or somebody mentioned earlier on, we've got to keep in the back of our mind also the, the operating costs. And my understanding that was that, you know, one of the things that our space modernization project would do would allow us to bring, uh, to bring into government property, some departments and activities that we're currently paying rent for where they're at. And so, um, Blaine, if you could, if you could maybe, um, um, correct me if that's an incorrect statement or, um, agree if it's a correct statement, but, um, you know, mo- moving the capital, moving a big capital cost late in the SPOS may help us on the SPOS, but it may really muck about with our operating costs for, which of course comes out of the general fund, um, on some of these other things. So I just, I think it's important as we're looking at this document, not to be fixated on this document solely, but also to keep in the back of our minds how this document intersects with our operating costs.
Absolutely. Well, well said. This is more to, to show you, show you what's happening. Sorry, I interrupted somebody.
Robert, I was going to add to that, Andy, and, and specifically with the space modernization program, you know, that was designed to save some money. I'll, I'll point to example, if, you know, if we ever get to a point of including a lot of these, um, a lot of these outlined departments into one building like Satula, like the plan. I mean, the water department building alone is worth, is worth 3.2 million dollars right now. You put that on the private market and sell it, that's 3.2 million dollars that could go back into, into the government coffers as, as can Satula and Daughtry, Daughtry Street. Uh, Robert, I'd be curious if you're moving black numbers around, you know, what, what would it look like if, if you did start the space modernization? And because I, I do, you know, you mentioned, uh, the affordable, the affordable housing needs to certainly stay in tier, tier one like it is. And the classic center has some partners, but I would look at the facilities, private funding, but I'd look at the facility space mobilizations also have a private funding. If we can take these buildings like Daughtry, Satula and, and turn them over to the private, private. If we can take these buildings like Daughtry, Satula and, and turn them over to the private, private side. So I'd be curious to see what would happen if you moved, started, um, started the facility space monetization and the classic center. Just because they need to get, both of those projects need to get their ducks in a row about, about where they're going and, and how it's going to look, uh, into FY 23. And see what would happen to the red numbers there, or even FY 24. I'd hate to start it then, but.
Okay. Yeah. Patty, you want to, um, let's see.
I guess use it from, I mean, maybe use it on spreadsheet three. Yeah, there you go. That's a good one.
Yeah, that's really, it's kind of what we have on spreadsheet three.
Of moving, but you don't have it for the classic center.
Oh yeah, that's right. And I'm not sure we can sh- shift something around to.
The classic center is starting immediately as well as affordable housing. Um, those, those monies are accounted under the bond proceeds and they're up here in the debt service area. We tried to simplify this sheet some and all you see down here is just the additional Splasst funding that would be needed. If you are doing the bonds to fund solely projects one, two, and three, then, um, those are accounted for up here under the bond debt service. With the exception of the additional monies that we would need for the affordable, uh, for the space and modernization.
Right.
The classic center does, would be starting, uh, immediately, um, as well as of course affordable housing.
Have we, have we determined that? I don't remember voting on that part.
Well, we have, um, I just know we have the memorandum of agreement with the classic center and they have been moving forward with, um, some of their items. I think there will be an agenda item maybe next month.
Yes.
Yeah, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is we haven't, we haven't approved any sort of construction contract or anything. And I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's still design and all that stuff to be done. So why could that not be? Why could that not, all of this, what you have up here, that 10 million, 12 million, move it to FY 23, move it, you see where I'm going?
I, I do. And, and it was covered a little bit as far as our limitations for our debt repayment. If we are doing the bonding for those projects, one, two, and three, then by pushing our debt repayment back one year. We're still locked into the 10, um, the FY 30 repayment. And then we get, um, probably too close or over our maximum principal for that, uh, repayment amount. I'm not sure.
But I guess if you're, if you can take that, I mean, if we're looking for other projects down below the 13 through 35, you know, certainly, certainly if the classic center could get their, you know, what they need to get in a row. I mean, they're not going to, they're not going to start construction next year.
Think right now, based on the sort of design and construction plan, they would finish construction third quarter of calendar 23.
That's correct.
Kelly, can I add something? Kelly?
Yeah.
May I add something?
Yeah.
Well, just kind of picking up on, on, on what Mike's saying. So as I said a minute, you know, we need to think about this in relation to our operating costs, but in terms of, of the space modernization project. Um, you know, if we bring all of those things into a central point and then we can, we can sell some of the maybe outlying property that we're using at the moment that we wouldn't have need for, that, that then becomes extra income that would be, could be run against some of these red numbers presumably. So, um, you know, if we were to, and I'm just picking a number out of the air here, but if we were to bring it, do the modernization, space modernization project. Bring some of the outlying areas into that building and then sell that property. And let's just say for the sake of argument, collectively that brought in, I don't know, $7 million. That's $7 million that could be run against some of these red numbers. Is that not correct?
I mean, it, it makes sense to me.
I would have to defer to either David or Benjamin Brooks maybe as to, um, legally, um, I guess we could do private, consider private funding or I'm not sure. Do you know, can you weigh in on that?
Well, I mean, I guess we would just add that, that money would, you know, from the sale would technically go into the general fund, but there would be nothing wrong with us, uh, you know, with the commission collectively agreeing that whatever money is made from those sales goes towards, you know, to supporting some of the, um, interim shortfall. You know, somewhere in the middle of this Splasst project to make the numbers balance. And then you could pick it up on the backend.
Now that's looking at a specific property example. So the Satula property is worth somewhere in that three and a half million dollar ballpark.
Yeah. Kelly, I see what you, Andy's saying too. It's almost like the general fund is loaning us the money until we get to the end. Is that what you're saying, Andy?
That's exactly what I'm saying. And so at the end of the day, we've still, we, you know, by the end of the Splasst, we've spent the amount of money that the Splasst, you know, is for, but, but we've kind of had a short-term temporary loan from the general fund that gets us through some of these, you know, quarter two and quarter three issues until we get out of the black, out of the red and back into the black. We still end up spending the same amount of money on the, on the Splasst, but it just maybe helps the cap, it helps the cash flow a little bit.
But that revenue only comes if the space modernization is earlier rather than later.
Precisely.
Blaine, we can.
Well, no, I think that's a, that's a good plan. Um, you know, how tightly y'all want to script that with values for properties, you know, into the future and the real estate market and whatnot. You, y'all have always been clear that, that, you know, trying to, uh, you know, consolidate in energy efficient buildings, uh, and space modernization and free up these outline sites that we manage with older buildings and we spend money on for redevelopment. No question there. It's just how far do you want to go with speculating on values further down into the, uh, further out into the program?
Well, I mean, obviously we don't know what the value of some of those properties is, you know, seven years from now or five years or whatever, but we kind of know what they are now. And we could, you know, we could at least plug those numbers in, um, you know. Um, but I mean, it's just, it's almost kind of like using the general fund as kind of like a, a bridge loan in this, in the middle of Splasst. Cause at the end of the day, we're going to spend, you know, the $195 million or whatever it is on the Splasst money. But the way it's set up at the moment, we've got a negative balance kind of in the middle. But if we do the space modernization early on and we can get some of our other activities in that new space and sell that property, it might, it might help us just with the cash flow. That's what I'm saying.
Right. And another thing to take account to, Andy, and Mayor is, uh, certainly we've seen this in previous Splasst, the construction and cost of things. I mean, I don't know what they look like in FY 30. Um, so.
That's true. Robert, you want to contrast? Go right ahead.
I had one, I had a quick question about how, I guess, you know, we move up the space modernization, but it, we're not really going to be able to execute it until the judicial center is completely constructed, right?
That's right.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that into people's minds.
That's, that's correct. I mean, at the moment, the, those are both, um, in that one bucket. But I mean, within that facility space modernization project, there are really kind of two sub bucket buckets. One is the judicial center and the other is the, is the renovation of the present courthouse.
That's right.
So you're, so Andy, you're, you're sort of envisioning those happening simultaneously. The, we're building the judicial center at the same time as we're, I guess, I don't know. I mean, how much renovation we can be able to do until?
They'd have to happen sequentially.
Yes. You'd have to do the new judi-, you'd have to do the judicial center first, then make, then move people out of the courthouse in order to be able to renovate the courthouse. But if you do both of those projects early on, you could then bring in some of the outlying, um, activities, um, into those, that space and then sell some of the property that we currently own that they are presently on.
Right, right. Yeah. Agreed, agreed with that. Yeah. I mean, if we could sell some of those properties for three, $4 million, then we can really start talking about moving up other projects, right? Or could we? Cause those sales proceeds would go into the general fund, so.
Well, I think the net effect would be that, you know, you would have the projects, uh, under your scenario proposing happen in, in the front end. And then you would be, uh, selling the other properties shortly after the completion of the new ones. And so you could model that injection in there. But I don't think that allows you to move others later in the program up. Those ones in the middle, if you will, would be predicated on the inflow of the sale of those properties. And if you weren't able to sell the properties either in a timely manner or, uh, for the amount anticipated, then it would just, those, those ones that were waiting in the middle may push a little bit further back. I think that would be the net effect if I'm thinking that through correctly.
But the sale, the sales proceeds of those vacated properties would go into the general fund though. They could be spent on Splasst projects, right?
You can augment Splasst projects with general fund dollars. Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah. Then I think having space monetization early makes sense to me because that could seed. You know, then, then we could sell some of those properties and get some of these Splasst projects done quicker.
Uh, Blaine, I mean, what I was imagining also then is if you did it that way, um, and I would want the attorney to, to confirm this, but you could then use the Splasst dollars to repay the general fund for the influx of general fund dollars that you've had from selling the out, the out parcels. So you still end up with $195 million Splasst. You're just mixing some general fund dollars in there in the middle and refunding the general fund with Splasst dollars at the end. I think you can do that.
Well, that, and it just introduces, yeah. I mean, th- then the general funds at, at risk until you can be, it can be made whole. So it just depends on your unrestricted fund balance and how long, but absolutely you could do that. I do want to point out, uh, Commissioner Hamby did bring up the water business office, and I know this has been a matter of discussion, but just for, you know, just to be clear, you know, that is an enterprise fund. The sale of that would not go into the general fund would be my understanding. So.
Well, I think we could, you know, it's my understanding, we control the enterprise fund so that we can, we can do with the enterprise fund what we want to do with the enterprise fund.
Well, I would just, I defer to the, the finance or the attorney, if they've got any comments on that.
Well, I, I defer to the charter.
I, if I, if I could, if I could jump in on this a little bit, um, I guess I, 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 I am cautious. Well, I think this is like some really creative problem solving. I like where this is going. I am cautious of us exploring this too far and committing ourselves to this. When it sounds like, you know, these are some decisions that could be completely unmade and we can't rely upon by a future commission about when those actual proceeds are there. And I really don't want us having a plan now that is so dependent upon so many variables that are unknown in the future, which it sounds like this kind of logic is.
And thanks for that.
I, I agree. I, I agree with Commissioner Jensen. I would say, I, I would not predicate moving up projects based on the sale of vacated properties due to space modernization. I, I would, I would look at it as a bonus. Like, oh hey, we got a good price selling this thing. So now we can jumpstart this Splasst project in tier four.
And remember, we're talking about probably a high seven or low eight figure total from, from all of that prospective revenue. So we're not talking about $30 million. Maybe we're talking about eight or nine or 10 or 11 million dollars total. To just in terms of real dollars if we were to sell right now.
I have a quick question.
Hey, go ahead, Melissa.
Um, is the bond beholden to those, you know, those top three projects? Or can we use that bond money for other projects? If, if any of those top three projects were to be delayed, could we use that bond money to finance any other projects on the Splasst list?
I think we were discussing that earlier and they're beholden to what we borrow against, but right now we've only taken out one bond. So the second bond can be borrowed against anything we want, right?
This is Tom Woodward with our first try on, and, uh, the answer is the, uh, the bonds, they're, the project use are just dictated by the projects approved from the Splasst. So any Splasst related project, uh, were fungible, which project we fund, again, as long as it's on the Splasst list.
Okay. So the bond dollars can be applied to any project, not just the one we intend, the ones we intend them to be funded by.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for clarifying that, Melissa. That kind of brings me back then to what I was, I guess, misunderstanding earlier at the beginning of all this. Um, but if we haven't taken, are, are the zeros that we're seeing next to one, two, and three, assuming essentially on this spreadsheet, that all the bond money is going to just those three projects?
I think that's right. Yes, that's the way we just set it up for, for clarity.
Well, I guess, given that that's an option, that we can use the bond money for some of these other projects, I'd really like us to be having this discussion with that on the table, you know, cause when the, when the public voted for these, for Splasst, I think the public is generally voting for the 30 plus projects altogether and are primarily much more excited about these half a million dollar projects than they are about the judicial center. So, you know, thinking about what the public wanted when they voted for this and what they're going to enjoy seeing getting built first. I'd like to see us have that in the picture when we're talking about bond, like have the, having the bond money be part of what we're looking at when we're thinking about what we can move around. And if there's things that are fixed related to the classic center or Bethel, then maybe having those on there in a different color. So we know we can't move that amount. But having at least the movable amount on there.
Okay.
So Robert, did you want to do any additional overview of, uh, kind of what has moved around in three versus one?
Yeah, that would be good. So this one moves, uh, the space modernization back up to the front. Even though it shows, you, you see those extra dollars being in, uh, quarter two, again, their siding, design, planning approvals, other things, starting uh, tier one in essence, uh, so we don't, and construction could start probably as early as tier three potentially. Um, just depending on how fast the, the design and all the approvals move. But the difference in this one, moving that back up again, just gives you a sense of the red and the, the projects that have to move out. Which, do we have those highlighted, Patty? Yeah, some of the primary ones that moved out in this one, again, not advocating for it. It's just for discussion. Bishop Park, you heard what Kent said earlier. Bear Hollow, you know, we, to show you the significance, even with the red in there, that took us moving it all the way to the fourth quarter. To get the, uh, to get the red even as minimal as we're showing. The recovery material processing reuse, you know, moving out substantially to quarters three and four. Uh, mental health is out. You know, again, I heard you say you wanted to see that one in. And, uh, Jackson Street Art Walk project. So those are sizable projects that we've moved out and we're, we're still in the red in the middle. And I, and I heard enough conversation to hear that there's several of those you don't want out there. So this is where the, uh, challenge comes in, uh, to, to get that guidance to try to figure out how we can balance these tier funding schedules. But really, number one was to show you and discuss the projects. Two and three were to show you major movers in there and the impact that they have on the overall spreadsheets.
So Robert, one question I had, just looking at, um, you know, where a deficit appears in any of them. And, and maybe this is a question for, you know, some combination of, of you and David Boyd. Um, so if we look at spreadsheet number one, for example, so the sort of deficit balloons to close to $30 million in FY 26.
Yes.
And then winos from there. So i- is there the prospect of, um, of authorizing a larger, um, bond or, or a third one? To mitigate that?
And so what this shows is general obligation bond, we're maxed out, of course, and, and doing those in tier two is where we're estimated to make it meet. Two is where we're estimated to make it meet what's required in the referendum. But I'll let David or Tom, I think would be the appropriate to speak on going to additional. Borrowing outside of the general obligation bond or add to what I said about the bond, the general obligation bonds.
Sure, uh, this is Tom Woodward again with our first try on. So I think we're all uh got our arms around the limited scope. Uh, or money's available from a general obligation bond perspective. So for the sake of argument, let's say we tap out all the remaining uh bonds we could issue associated with that. Uh, there are a handful of options uh that the unified government could do to borrow uh additional money. Uh, you know, of course, one is uh the unified government could go back to do a a second general obligation bond, which includes a referendum. Uh, I know that is sometimes difficult to pass, so that could be a a nonstarter from that perspective. But to avoid uh the referendum process, uh there are really two uh very common financing programs or uh. Uh, uh, financing mechanisms that are used here in our state. Uh, the first one is to have a local authority issuing as a conduit authority. And they issue bonds and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with unified government. Uh, we've, I've worked with you guys in the past on financing transactions using the Downtown Development Authority or other conduit authorities. And that basically puts the the credit, the balance sheet of Adams Clark County on the financing. So it's uh sometimes referred to as a backdoor general obligation bond. And it could be used to pay uh additional SPOSS related projects. And SPOSS uh dollars can be used to uh uh help pay those bonds off uh if SPOSS dollars are available. If SPOSS dollars for whatever reason are not available, ultimately it's the general fund uh that's supporting the transaction. So uh that's called again, an intergovernmental agreement or a backdoor GO, and you guys have done that before. Another option, uh we'll call it your tier one type projects or essential projects. It's called lease purchase financing, and that's where we utilize uh an ACCG and enter into a long term lease. And uh that lease is subject to annual appropriation. Because it's subject to an annual appropriation. It doesn't constitute long term indebtedness in our state, which therefore gives you an exemption uh from having to go through the referendum process. So each year is an automatic renewal unless negative action taken, but uh the mayor commissioners would approve that lease uh each and every year. Having said that, uh when bondholders or certificate holders buy those bonds. There's a risk uh of what happens if a government decides not to appropriate four, five, six years down the road. So typically, uh those projects are deemed essential, courthouses, jails, et cetera, that. The likelihood of a nonappropriation is nil. Conversely, uh if times got tough and you guys had to make very tough decisions. You may look at cutting access or a lease subject to parks and rec. And so bondholders know that there's a risk that that would probably be one of the first things on the chopping block, so not deemed essential on that side. So if we were to look at a lease purchase financing, it would yield toward the more brick and mortar, uh new construction, essential type project. So sorry for the long winded answer, but beyond our GOs that we have issued, uh there are other financing alternatives to increase your borrowing capacity. Uh, beyond the GO bonds uh and uh utilize SPOSS dollars.
Uh, that that's helpful. And and of course, we're in a a dollar value SPOSS environment rather than a time limited one. So I I wonder if that would. Benefit certainty of repayment, you know, given that, you know, when when those pennies roll in, these projects are going to happen, whether that happens in. Eleven and a half years, you know, eleven years and nine months or twelve years and one month.
Yes, sir.
Um, and and would any of you kind of advise as to the relative risk? Um, or benefit of using either of those financing vehicles?
We we would, both both are very strong, very helpful. Uh, Ben would have some legal questions related to if we were to go the lease purchase route. Uh, related to some real estate matters. Looking at it from a financial standpoint, a uh a general obligation bond is going to be your cheapest cost of money. So lowest interest rate, meaning less SPOSS dollars go into the bond holders. Uh, the second best option is the intergovernmental agreement. And since it's not a general obligation bond, it's actually deemed a revenue bond uh went through the intergovernmental agreement. And uh even though it's the same credit backstop of the unified government, uh it'll trade five, six, seven basis points higher. Uh, when we sell the bonds, just because investors see revenue bond versus general obligation bond. And then the spread uh from that is another fifteen, twenty five basis points uh for the lease purchase type financing. So to answer your question, uh i- if we were to go one of the two routes uh from an economic perspective, I'd encourage the IGA.
Okay, I appreciate it. That Melissa, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I'm I'm just curious, um, what what is the fallout if the um. Classic Center Arena were to move to quarter two? Um. You know, as far as like having that that bond money available, um. I mean, this isn't really my wheelhouse, so I I need y'all to step step in and and like just give me a. Case scenario if if, I mean, because the Classic Center has not secured that other funding and and there are still a lot of. Things up in the air regarding how that arena project is going to um be covered. Does anybody have any input on that?
This is Tom Woodward. I'll I'll jump in just with a couple of points from a bond issue perspective. Um, we're in extremely low interest rate market right now. Obviously, none of us have a crystal ball, so you just have additional. Time of what interest rates may do in the future, up or down, you know, nobody really knows. Probably the more relevant one is that, as you guys remember, when we voted in the GO bonds, uh. Part of how GO bonds are voted in on our state is that each year we have a maximum amount of principal that may may mature on any given year. So to the extent that we uh push a GO bond out into the future. That just reduces the general obligation, you know, bandwidth that we have. It decreases each and every year. Just like in twenty twenty, one could say that we left a little bit of GO bond bonding capabilities or capacity on the table. Now, the bond issue, that's just a timing mechanism because obviously what being, this is all being paid off by the SPOSS. So if we did push off uh a bond issue to another year or another term. That would just, the lower bond par amount would just be supplemented more from the pennies on a paygo basis. So those are my only comments from a bond perspective.
Can I just add? I mean, I think, you know, taking the bonds out of the picture for a moment, Melissa, I mean, I think one thing with delaying the Classic Center. Is it delays the positive impact it would have on our. Um, sales tax revenue, on our hotel motel tax, because obviously the reason we're doing this is because it's an economic development. Projects. And so, you know, if we delay it, the benefits that we would get from that obviously get pushed further out in terms of. You know, more people coming to town and spending time and money in restaurants, maybe staying overnight for uh an event, that kind of stuff.
And associated employment.
Mayor, I have a question if you don't mind too, just based on what 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 your comments were about. Are there, you know, and thinking about additional bonding opportunities? And um, you know, I know, I I don't know if, did we give JDA? Uh, the Joint Development Authority the bonding uh capabilities and does, you know, the mayor commission serve as a redevelopment authority? So I think we have bonding capabilities. I mean, if we're looking at. Uh, to address, you know, certainly like the library on the east side. I mean, I could certainly see the Joint Development Authority helping us out by bonding that and um. Paying, getting, getting it paid back through the SPOSS dollars within these tiers here. Any, any, I don't know, I don't know, Judd around, did we give them that authority to do some bonding?
Well, I think, I think we could, you know, I think we could, I I do, I do think they had that authority. I I also think, you know, the Downtown Development Authority has that authority. Uh, so. Yeah, certain projects, yes, under authority, I'm sorry, but. I I think we could work with uh the Joint Development Authority. I do.
Yeah, I I think Judd brings up a good point on that authority financing that. Really, we we have to look closely at the the powers, you know, all of the authorities are going to have the ability to issue bonds. But they, some of them are limited in terms of the types of projects that they can do. So if that's a the the route we want to go, we we have to look closely at enabling legislation. And uh and make sure that they have the ability to issue bonds for that particular kind of project.
Well, the downtown's limited in the downtown boundary area, so there is that, but I don't know about the G, right?
May I uh ask a couple of things?
Go ahead, Jesse.
Uh, so one is I'm wondering if there's a way that we could be sent this totally awesome spreadsheet. So maybe we could tinker with our own little dragging around of projects to kind of work out in our own heads. You know, what we'd like to advocate for and have a better sense of what's possible.
Yes, yep.
Yeah? Okay, that would be.
Absolutely.
Well, I will, I will say this, um, it is a pretty intricate spreadsheet and. Uh, we obviously don't mind sharing it so that you can move things around, but. Um, you you know, every spreadsheet that every commissioner turns in, we're going to have to go through and make sure every single. Cell is reporting directly so that there's no inherent mistake. So. Uh, Mr. Hool, there's nothing we're trying to hold back, but it does complicate. Um, you know, I I I wish there was an easier way that we could have you just move blocks around, you know, to try to do that. So we'll do that, but it's gonna. Got to be very careful, you know, at that.
Maybe when it, if it, when when it's sent out, if you can just say, you know, maybe some specific instructions on what we can move to not break it.
I have to try to keep the debt service repayment in there some way. And so it kind of complicates things a little bit as to if you are going to, right now, the spreadsheets that we have given to you. Was on the preset that projects one, two, and three would be the ones that we would bond out. And clearly with our second or potential third bonding, you could choose or select other um. Projects, you know, that you wanted to carry that bonding. And that's where it gets pretty intricate as far as how you spread it out on the spreadsheet. Um, what I would like and what would help, um, I think our department more than anything is knowing how each commissioner. Prioritizes these projects in their mind and how if we had. Um, the entire budget amount and said, here, Jesse, how do you want to spend this money first? You know, if you could prioritize those projects, that would help us more than anything, because then we could look at every commissioner. And how you want to spend the money and try to make everybody happy as much as we can.
So following up on that, Patty, and and kind of thinking about what I've heard over the course of the the evening tonight. You know, i- if we'd use the the first spreadsheet sort of as a foundation. Um, certainly heard interest in more renewable energy funds earlier. Uh, I heard some interest in mental health earlier and interest in Vincent. And I heard at least some, but not absolute willingness to move back the MRF. Um, you know, now that those, you know, mental health and Vincent actually. Together don't even rise to the level of the MRF, so you could. Really look at just over a million dollars of additional renewable dollars kind of moving forward if the MRF was to move back. Uh, and th- those uh, those other two, mental health and Vincent, were to move up. Obviously, then there's the question of. Of ensuring that that we haven't gone into the red uh by tier four as as currently is conceived on spreadsheet one. And so. You know, I'd I'd certainly be interested in uh the the prospect of looking at how, you know, an additional um authority facilitated bond. Could could fix that. Would would commissioners like to see that as a model?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I think I heard Commissioner Hamby volunteer the ADDA to build the Classic Center. Was that correct?
Yes, obviously, obviously, we've passed the marijuana.
But uh.
It's in the, it's in the downtown district, so you're ready to go, aren't you?
It could be possible. I'm not saying it's not possible.
Own hands.
Yeah, I will say, so I'm I agree with Jesse. I'd like to get a copy of the of uh spreadsheet one, I guess, just to tinker with. I know. It makes people nervous, but uh, but I think that would be helpful.
Oh, man, good.
But I agree with Kelly about other authorities. Coming in to help us.
I'm wondering if the Industrial Development Authority would be qualified to bond the MRF? I mean, I I understand the the dire need at that facility, um, and it is an expensive project.
Well, I I'd also like to say that, you know, what we've talked about, uh, and it's clearly the interest to try to move as much up in the program as possible. And uh, Mr. Woodward has told us ways in which we can borrow even more funds. I just want to be clear, net effect of that is greater interest expense, which comes out the, you know, it comes out of the projects. And so. Earlier discussion we started with was, is renewable energy in or out of the projects? Well, that depends on how much we have to spend on the projects. This isn't a a case for interest versus renewable energy, don't get me wrong there. But what I'm saying is there will be less funds for projects, the more interest expense that you pay. And so there's a balance there and we, we don't have answers tonight, nobody does. Uh, but there is, um, as you move. If you borrow more and more and more of the program, uh you're going to pay more interest expense.
And. I guess another overarching big question that I think I share with at least Commissioner Link. Is what happens if we move some of these mega projects, you know, the big, big ones, numbers one, two, and three, at least, you know, to the degree that. Portions of one and three are movable, if we move them back by just a couple of years. You know, does that allow us to front load a lot more without needing to borrow more? Especially, when I say a lot more, I mean, a lot more of these like smaller projects that are under a million apiece. And just as a side note too, because I feel like this might have been a bit unclear in the in the previous discussion, um. But with Beach Haven, uh, all that, uh. All that I think anybody is really looking for there, at least all that I'm advocating for, um, is the amount we need to kind of get that that study done and get it opened up. And so that much larger portion of that project, I think, could get moved even further back to make space for other things to move up farther. Such as the sidewalk projects that uh other commissioners were talking about.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I I just had a quick question. Can the s- can the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund bond? For say the MRF? Can the enterprise funds bond?
The, you you know, I've looked at a couple of the enterprise funds. Uh, regarding water and sewer and and things of that nature and and. Usually those funds are pretty limited in the sorts of things that that they do. So I don't, I don't know if that project sort of falls within. Uh, you know, falls within its authority.
I'm thinking of the landfill enterprise fund possibly bonding the MRF.
Yeah, the. The the enterprise fund is not a separate entity with bonding authority, so those bonds have to be issued by the United Government. But, you know, can be backed by revenues from that project.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, Tim.
Russell, and I think we used, Kelly could grab me on this, but I think we used the Public Facilities Authority to bond. Some water, water services stuff and and some other things in the past, I believe.
Um, my 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 last two kind of comments is uh is is one, uh, I I I'm also like, would like to see the spreadsheet just be able to play around with. But not necessarily to submit to staff, because I think staff is correct that at least half of us will break this spreadsheet when we give it back. Um, but I think something, a nice compromise, and what I'm hearing from staff's needs. Is just a clear idea of the prioritization of all this stuff. So possibly if we could just come up with, uh. Have somebody send out to us where we just simply prioritize every one of these projects as quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, or quarter four. And hope that we don't just put everything under quarter one. And possibly then staff could kind of weigh those things to try to see where the most prioritization is at. And just to get a little bit more of a, I guess, a consensus of of where the prioritization is. Um, I think that's something that we could do without breaking the spreadsheet. Um, and then my other comment is, uh, yeah, I just, I I definitely support, uh, because I think it's seeming to me likely. Inevitable that we might have to do uh another bond. So I just, maybe just uh. Having our attorneys and staff uh come back and kind of with a a menu of options of some of these IGA bonds. Giving, telling us who, uh, you know, who can do the bonding, what their limitations are, what projects could possibly fall under that, there's limitations. That kind of thing, just to. that kind of thing, just to give us kind of what our options would be for that.
Tim, I wonder if just that, that exercise of a, a, of really kind of prioritizing everything. You know, we may be past that point, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, and Mayor, if I might ask Mr. Woodward, and David, and Finance Director David Boyd. So my understanding, uh, so you're, you know, with the SPOST borrowing, it has to be paid within the SPOST. Um, and then if we were to do outside bond, bonding, then you could go beyond the SPOST. But my understanding is that, uh, the debt service uh, source, the revenue would come from the SPOST collections themselves. So the more that you borrow, unless you delay the repayment, uh, more of the, uh, revenues coming in in the front years would be dedicated towards debt service and less going to other projects. So the net effect is at some point, some projects are pushed all the way out to the end. And, um, you know, when you get that far out, uh, and, and a lot of the collections are, well, I'll just leave it at that. Am I, is that dynamic? Is that what, what would happen here? Or is there something different with these outside bonds that you're suggesting?
I guess you're, you're right, uh, you know, exactly on the GEO bonds, uh, and bonds you'd fill up the bond bucket first, uh, with your monthly sales tax coming in to make sure you have enough to pay the debt service. And then anything remaining, uh, from that, uh, can go to your pay as you go projects, uh, for the balance of that called SPOST year, if you will. Uh, the GEO bonds, you know, those are voted in and so we know, uh, we can't go beyond, uh, that final maturity, uh, that is set there. Uh, with an IGA revenue bond and Ben helped, correct me if I'm wrong on this, on statute laws, we could look at issuing, you know, since it's an IGA, even though we have SPOST funds being able to help pay the debt service off on this, the true credit is the general fund of Athens Clark County. And so if the mayor's commissioners wanted to look at going beyond the final maturity of the SPOST, you can look at that. And sometimes you'll see counties or school districts issue a twenty year bond, which is a five or six year SPOST, hoping that that SPOST will renew and continue forward. Here in this case, if we were to have an IGA bond go twenty years, just to throw out a number, uh, then we would have to, you know, think hard about that because if the SPOST is not renewed upon the sunset this time, uh, then that debt would directly fall on the, uh, uh, general fund of, uh, Athens Clark. Ben, just to make certain, I, you know, I, I don't like white quote state laws. Did you see anything wrong with that logic?
No, I agree with that. I agree with that. There's nothing that would limit the term of an intergovernmental contract back deal or one of these deals we've talked about through an authority. Those can, uh, th- those can be up to fifty years. So that, that's certainly possible to extend that out beyond the, the SPOST term, but you're right. Um, you know, debt service on that beyond the SPOST term has to come from, from someplace else.
Mayor, I would like us to explore that. Certainly I'm, you know, you, everybody may jump through the computer on me at this one, but if you look at what we're borrowing now, it's half of the SPOST dollars and it looks like the debt service on that is the maximum each year of fifteen, fifteen million dollars for that. I mean, you know, we could cer- why don't we borrow the, why don't we borrow the other half from using some of these, using some, I, the intergovernmental agreements like the, like these folks are talking about. And then just use, use the proceeds. I mean, then you get everything going in quarter one. And, and then, you know, just, you see where I'm going with that? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the front loading's, uh, I mean, what folks are definitely looking to do. I, I, I would imagine that there's some sort of functional consideration just around how many things can get off the ground at the same time.
Well, yeah, I get that, but you see where I'm going. I mean, I don't, I think we ought to explore how we can borrow as much as we can in order, in order to front load. Because we've got the, you know, we know the money's going to come in each year. Uh, fifteen million to pay, to pay back and one debt, to debt services. So you know, I, I, I think it's worth exploring.
Uh, and Mr. Woodward, Mr. Brooks, just to make sure I understand, so uh, with the revenue bonds, that the term may extend beyond tier twelve or the twelfth year. Then the revenues that would service that debt, you said you would be hopeful that the SPOST would renew. So are you saying that a potential source of paying those bonds, the revenue would be a future, uh, the next SPOST passed?
Uh, yes, that could be, um, you know.
Or the general fund. Either one of those.
The general fund or a, a future SPOST, you, you can pay back. Um, you could have that be one of the authorized purposes for the next SPOST is to pay back that existing debt.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You know, I was gonna make one final remark, because I know we need to move on, but, but you know, if, if there's a way where we can work that out and front load a lot of these projects, because like everybody said, all these projects are important. And all these projects impact the quality of life, the economy, the, the way we provide government service here in this community. And, you know, as, as you get to be fifty, you realize how short life becomes and you'd like to get everything done in quarter one rather than quarter two. Uh, you know, certainly from that standpoint. So if there, if this is possible, I'm, I'm serious, I think we ought to, we ought to really look at it and that way, that way we do make everybody happy.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. I, I want to, um, I want, want to get any kind of final comments so that staff can then model some of what we've discussed. Um, see, I know I've got a, a note from Jesse, so go ahead, Jesse. And then I'm just going to kind of circle back to, to everyone individually. Um, so we can wrap this up. Go ahead, Jesse.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Gertz. And apologies to any viewers who have heard me talk over others. I kind of shared with others in the chat. My, my connection's really crazy today, so apologies for that. Um, I, I'm really grateful for all this. I want to kind of echo the comments we've heard most recently about at least exploring other options. I'd love to understand all the options so we can make an informed decision, uh, when it comes to, to further bonding. And, um, if we're going to rank our projects, I really just want to stress, uh, the request that we're all asked to rank all of the projects and that anything in those projects, number one, two, and three, that is not like entirely fixed, um, I would like us to not assume that this body fully agrees it should be, um, put in right out front. Um, so I'd just like to, like to ask if that be included in whatever future prioritization we're doing. And with that, I'll kick it over to whoever's next in your.
I'll, I'll just go, uh, go down the line. Russell, anything else?
I feel, yeah, I feel like this was a good discussion. I think, I think we're, I think we're close to a consensus based on what I'm, based on this discussion. I think we're pretty close to a consensus. Maybe moving back the MRF a little bit and moving up the mental health and the Vincent Drive. Um, so I, I, I think we're closer than, than maybe some folks think. I, I think we're really close.
Thanks, Russell. Andy?
Well, just, uh, just a, excuse me, just a couple of things. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I would still suggest that the space modernization stuff is really important. I mean, it's, it's was one of the big ticket items, you know, for, and we decided to place it early for, for a reason. Um, it's, it's helps us provide services to, um, you know, to the public in a more effective and efficient manner. It's not necessarily a, a, you know, a sexy project in the way in which some of the others may be, but, um, uh, and I think the judicial center, again, that's not something that, you know, everybody gets excited about, but there are some, it does tie into our criminal justice reform efforts. I mean, if you go to the current courthouse, I mean, you have, um, the, you know, accused and victims having to sometimes stand around in the same corridors. You don't have really good places for juries to meet. So uh, you know, I think it's important that we, we kind of bear some of those broader things, um, broader things in mind. Uh, the question I had was, since we're all giving the manager things to do. Um, I would like to know, um, you know, the best estimate that we have of how much money, unspent money we would have in, once plus, once all the projects from SPOST twenty eleven are constructed, um, that could then also be used for, um, some of these things that we're talking about here. Um, and I know it's a bit difficult to, to figure out, but if they could, if, if the manager's office could maybe spitball some very, some, based upon what you've heard tonight, spitball some different scenarios in terms of what moving some of the larger projects around may or may not do for our, um, general fund operating costs. Cause I, that, uh, I think that's also something to, to bear in mind because what might make sense from the SPOST schedule may not make sense from, um, the operational funding perspective.
Thanks, Andy. Avita, anything?
Um, I don't really have anything. I've just been listening. Um, I do think that there are probably people here, um, much more, uh, with much more expertise than I do. So I always just speak from a place of, of that, that I'm comfortable with. And I do think that the work that the CAC did on this, um, we should keep that in consideration as we're, um, pri- prioritizing. Um, we know that there were key, um, key issues, key things that was very, very prevalent in the black community. Um, and I do know that when we have to look at other funds instead of general funds for the things that we have to have to run a, uh, a city. I think it's important. So I hope we don't, um, pick this apart. Um, yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. I just think we should keep in mind what the CAC had put in, how they were prioritized and what programs were prioritized late. And that those issue, the, the things that we committed to, um, the east side of Athens, we followed through with. And I do know that we're moving ahead and thankful we're moving ahead with the Bethel project. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Avita. Any final thoughts, Mike?
Yeah, just, I mean, I'd, I'd look forward to see what other partners we can bring into the fold as far as helping us get some financing for this. And I don't know what the timeframe on that could look like. Um, you know, and over, we're planning on voting in this in January, but uh, I, I would just encourage us to think big. I mean, if we can find partners that could help us with some of this financing, let's, let's utilize that. And let's get some of these projects done sooner rather than later. And, uh, and, 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 and work, work within that. I, I think, you know, it's, it, it'll pay off for us and it'll pay off for the community. And it'll help, you know, get some of these, uh, things done early. Uh, so, uh, with that said, you know, I'd like to see that, but I'd also still like to see the spreadsheet to see if, you know, if we are going to continue doing all these tiers and quarters, uh, to tinker around with that a little bit. I promise not to mess anything up for anybody. So.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kelly.
That'll be a first, Mike.
Kelly, one of the things I will say, I do know that Columbia, um, is looking at other, uh, finances too. So other resources. So maybe that'll fold in, um, to, um, to something that's going to be positive for everybody.
Thanks. Patrick, any closing thoughts?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank staff and all the departments for, for being here tonight. And getting all this three hour long work session, but, um, pretty much my colleagues have echoed it or stated some of the, uh, some of the things that I'm interested in, more financing options. But, um, truthfully, all I care about is the east side. And, um, I do, I'm still gonna beat my heart about the MRF. You know, um, anything that saves us money, that we can get out the way now, we give it, but like Andy's idea for staff to look at, um, things that make us money, things that save us money, intellectual improvement and renovate before building. Um, I would like to see the proceeds so I can put, take around with it as well. And just to, you know, I hate, hate that sometimes we make decisions that we put politics involved, even though we're kind of the politician, but that judicial center was built in, I believe, nineteen fourteen or something. And, you know, it, it's crowded, it's crap. You know, I, I've had some res, um, some of my cousins who unfortunately had to go through there and they even complained about it. So, um, I think the judicial center may not be popular in the public, but it, you know, as leaders and, um, you know, representatives for not only just our constituent, but for the county in the future, we need to focus on the things that need to get done and that judicial center is one of them. And we can't build, uh, we can't do the space modernization fully without building that judicial center.
Thanks, Patrick. Mariah?
Thank you. And I also want to thank staff and my colleagues for a really good discussion. Um, uh, I think that a lot of great things were brought up, particularly with breaking out some of these projects into their component parts to think about how we can spread that money out over a longer period of time and get to some things sooner than later. I will echo that, um, I do think the mental health facility is really important. And so I agree with those who have said, who, who, who have leaned towards, uh, perhaps pushing back the MRF in order to prioritize that project as well as, um, the Vincent Drive sidewalk. And again, any sort of ways that we can front load some of the more, uh, more public facing projects. I think people will, being able to see the benefit of their tax dollars at work will be good. And I think that, um, helping folks with, uh, being able to walk to the bus, walk to the park over on Vincent Drive, and also have access to more comprehensive mental health care through funding that facility earlier helps accomplish some of that, as well as uh, making it so that we can get folks out exploring, um, Beach Haven sooner than later. Um, I think the folks on the west side will appreciate that a great deal. And I also want to say thanks to my colleagues for sharing my, um, my, my, a priority for the east side projects. I haven't had much to say because the things, I think the projects that folks in my district are most concerned about have been well taken care of. And so I want to thank you all for joining in support for those. And that's it.
Thanks, Mariah. Melissa, any final thoughts? Melissa, if you're there, you're muted. All right, Melissa, I'll come back to you if you're, you're still there. Tim?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, I think I echo, uh, just a lot of, uh, the same things, uh, that my colleagues have said. Uh, the biggest, I, I think, um, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Hamby here. I mean, the more we talk about this, there's a lot of priorities. And while it might be a little bit more complex, um, I think we're just gonna have to eventually do a revenue bond. And so I want us to start preparing for us to be able to do that. Because like I do, I think, you know, I think we need to be able to do the mental health, uh, housing project, but also the MRF. I mean, I, I, going back to what Commissioner, uh, Harrod said, like, it's going to be costing us money if we put that one off, uh, especially operational costs, but also the Bishop Park pool that's leaking into, uh, Normal Town, uh, Vincent Drive, all these things are definitely priorities. And if we can take out this revenue bond, um, instead of having to stress like crazy and try to squeeze these few things in and having some people be unhappy, if we can take this revenue bond out and kind of, uh, fulfill all of these promises in a timely manner, which is what I think our constituents are expecting. Plus moving some stuff up that I would love this he moved up, like the Talisi Force, if we could. Um, I think that's the best outcome here. So yeah, I would love for us, the next time we have this work session to really have, uh, some options on the revenue bonds, uh, uh, shown, shown before us. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Melissa, I, I, I see you. Could you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know what's going on with my mute. It said I wasn't muted, but apparently I was. Um, yeah, I think, you know, Tim kind of wrapped it up. You know, I do see the dire need for some of these high ticket items that we're talking about bumping back like the MRF. I mean, if that facility breaks down, there goes our recycling stream for this community. And we know how much this community pri- prioritizes recycling. Um, so yeah, I, I feel like our only option is to, to go for another bond. Um, um, you know, and, and yeah, the citizens spoke pretty clearly about the projects that were priorities for them. And those are not necessarily the prior projects that, you know, we've clearly prioritized these big ticket projects, but we, we know the need particularly for space modernization and, and the judicial center, but those are two things that are interdependent upon one another. You know, we can't even think about space modernization until we have a judicial center built. Center built, so we have an empty courthouse to move into, and then sell off these buildings. So, you know, if, if we need to prioritize that, then we need to, to get on determining where that Judicial, Judicial Center goes. And from what I understand, we, this money does not include the land for it. So those are some questions we're gonna have to ask.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Certainly, there've been some specific projects noted, interest in other financing vehicles. And, and, you know, clearly, some things are not going to happen tomorrow, but there's interest in some things moving closer to the present day rather than a decade out. So I guess, staff, I'll, I'll ask you to, to kind of take what you've heard, explore some of the financing options. Obviously, the idea of using an authority as a conduit is something that's come up again and again. I, I don't know if you've got a kind of ballpark sense now of, you know, how far out this pushes sort of approval of this. Obviously, we're bumping up against the end of the year. And so, you know, if, if this has to move to, you know, what would normally be our January agenda setting session, or even February, such as it is. But Robert or Blaine, I don't know if any of you have thoughts right now you want to make note of?
I've, I've got a few. Blaine, if you're okay?
Yes, sir, of course.
All good conversation. I, I obviously want to sit down with, with Blaine and talk about a lot of what we discussed and get some direction on some things. I would, in addition to prioritizing things somehow, so I want to work on that a little bit to see if we can get a little more direction on a few of them. And I certainly expected some of the conversation to go to moving everything up front that you could. But in addition to the money, I hope you'll realize that there's only so much staff that can roll these things out. And y'all got to keep in mind yourself, the number of work sessions, and, and the concept approvals, and the schematic approvals. It's, it's going to be a lot of your time as well to do those things. So just keep in mind the reality of trying to roll these things out, RFPs, user groups, that's, it's pretty monumental. So keep that in mind in addition to the money. And then I did have an offer, and I'd like to see what Blaine thought about this. We would be willing to have you come in and look at the spreadsheets, and go over them with you, and let you move things around, however. And that would give Patty and myself the opportunity to check, to make sure that things aren't out of whack. Not that you mess anything up, but a lot of the things are connected. And, you know, how, y'all know spreadsheets better than I do. But there's a lot of equations in there, and a lot of things that we have based in there. We would be willing to sit down with you, not to tell you what to do, but to give you that opportunity to have that immediate feedback to make sure that it's accurate, if you'd like. But I'll talk to Blaine about that some more as well.
I'd like to get the, I'd still like to get an email with the spreadsheet attached to it, Robert. We, we were emailed a spreadsheet when we put these projects together. I'd like an email spreadsheet on this. I, I know how to operate a spreadsheet, and I think others do as well.
No problem. That's all I have, Blaine. Thank you, Mayor.
I have nothing else, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So got some work to do, you know, to encourage any of you who either want to fiddle with the spreadsheet on your own at home, or have a facilitated session to veil yourself of that. So for everybody here on staff, I really appreciate all your time. I know you spent a lot of time listening and obviously planning many of these projects from the outset and responding to questions. For Benjamin and others on the outside, we appreciate you being here tonight. It's helpful to have your expertise. And so with that, we'll go ahead and end the public session. Everybody, please have a great night. Do want to note, I think this is Commissioner Harrod's last evening on camera here. So Commissioner Harrod, we, we had fond farewells for you last week. But everybody, take a screenshot right now. This is, this is the face that you have come to love for 14 years. And you're gonna have to only get it in person here on out. So, Andy, thanks a lot.
He's broke my camera. That's why I'm not on camera.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it.
All right. And public farewell. We're gonna move into executive session. Staff, thanks again.